This September 25th, 2025, regular meeting of the Fairfax County School Board will now come to order. In the event of a tornado warning, everyone should quietly and calmly proceed through the lower right-hand door at the front of the auditorium and follow the directions of uniform, security, and staff. Please be courteous to each other and do not panic. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a moment of silence and the performance of the National Anthem by Justin Keijon Lee, a soloist from Luther Jackson Middle School.
I pledge allegiance to the flag-
...of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, on creation,
Can you guys please give one more round of applause to our amazing student? Agenda item 3.02, Announcements. On behalf of the School Board, we would like to welcome Fairfax City School Board Chair Carolyn Pitches and member Sarah Kelsey to us, to join us this evening. Mr. Frisch has submitted a written request to attend this evening's meeting virtually due to a medical conflict, is attending this evening's meeting from his home in the Providence District. All those in favor of Mr. Frisch's request. That is unanimous for all board members present. Mr. Frisch, can you check? We see you. Can we check? Can you check your mic?
Yes.
Perfect. We can hear you as well. Agenda item 3.03, Honoring National Literacy Month Proclamation. I call on Mr. Dunn for a proclamation.
Whereas, International Literacy Day was established as September 8th by the United Nations Educational, Scientific, and Cultural Organization, UNESCO, in 1967 in Tehran, Iran, as a reminder of the importance of literacy as a human right. And in 2024, the U.S. Senate passed a resolution designating September as National Literacy Month, noting that literacy is the cornerstone for personal growth, economic opportunity, and a strong society. And whereas, on September 28th, 2023, the Fairfax County Public Schools Division Superintendent presented on the Equitable Access to Literacy, EAL, Plan, which commits to using data to identify systemic barriers, providing a solid foundation in literacy, and deepening educators' knowledge of evidence-based literacy and culturally responsive teaching. And whereas, Fairfax County Public Schools' Equitable Access to Literacy Plan aligns with the Virginia Literacy Act of 2022 to ensure that FCPS aligns with the commitment to evidence-based and high-quality foundational literacy programs. And whereas, according to the 2024 FCPS Division Literacy Plan, the district is committed to ensuring that students receive explicit instruction in reading and writing to achieve proficiency in literacy and eliminate disproportionate outcomes based on race, gender, zip code ability, socioeconomic status, or languages spoken at home. And whereas, this commitment has been made with the understanding that literacy is essential to human potential and economic success, as a 2020 Gallup study found that the United States stands to lose up to $2.2 trillion annually due to low adult literacy rates, and low literacy creates a major skills gap in our workforce. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Fairfax County School Board hereby proclaims September as National Literacy Month, and reaffirms their commitment to promoting reading and literacy as the catalyst for our students' future academic success, their preparation for jobs of the future, and their ability to compete in a global economy.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Moon, thank you. I will call for a vote. All those in favor. Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixitt, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, and myself. That is unanimous. Agenda item 3.04, Honoring Alice's Kids, a local nonprofit organization proclamation. I call on Ms. St. John Cunningham for a proclamation.
Whereas, every day countless children may feel shame or embarrassment because they cannot afford a prom ticket, fill trip fees, back-to-school clothes, summer camp, instrument rentals, and other items or services that more fortunate peers may take for granted, leading to potential setbacks in their personal and academic lives. And whereas, Alice's Kids, a Fairfax County-based nonprofit organization, responds to thousands of requests from teachers, social workers, and family liaisons across the country by anonymously paying for these items in a way that avoids shaming the child, or their parent, or caregiver. And whereas, Alice's Kids has provided direct anonymous financial assistance to thousands of children in need living in Fairfax County since its inception in 2011. And whereas, Ron and Laura Fitzsimmons, who lived for years in poverty, named their charity after their inspiring mother, Alice. And whereas, at the beginning of the school year, Alice's Kids is especially inundated with requests from Fairfax County Public School teachers, social workers, and family liaisons for help in providing basic supplies such as a backpack, back-to-school clothes, and school supplies. And whereas, requests this year have increased considerably compared to previous years, at the same time, many new teachers, social workers, and family liaisons may not be aware of the services provided by Alice's Kids. Whereas, the School Board of Fairfax County Public Schools encourages all FCPS personnel to utilize the unique financial services provided by Alice's Kids should they identify a child with a specific need. Now therefore, be it resolved that the School Board of Fairfax County Public Schools expresses its deep gratitude to Alice's Kids for supporting Fairfax students in a way that lifts them while preserving their dignity.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel. I will call for a vote. All those in favor. Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixitt, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, or Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, and myself. That is unanimous. I would like to welcome all those here in support of the Honoring Alice's Kids, a local nonprofit organization proclamation, to please join the board for a photo at the front I would like to welcome all those here in support of the Honoring National Literacy Agenda item 4.01, Community Participation. The next order of business is community participation. We welcome all community members who are here and those who have signed up to speak this evening. Additional information about signing up to provide comments at School Board regular business meetings and public hearings can be found on the School Board website at www.fcpss.edu/schoolboard. During the sign-up process, community members acknowledged they were informed of the School Board's expectations for proper decorum when providing comments. These expectations are also available online with the printed agenda in the meeting materials at the back of the room. We ask audience members to be respectful of one another. Shouting and outbursts will not be tolerated. Please hold your applause until the conclusion of the speaker's remarks. Audience members may not join speakers at the podium and should remain at their seats, including when recording video or taking photos. We are grateful to all those who have come to speak today, and thank you for your cooperation. School Board members will be listening but not responding. Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
Good evening. My name is Barrett Wilford. I'm a senior at Woodson High School and a captain of the Woodson Robotics Team. Our team has had many struggles in the past several years, however, this most recent year has been very historic. In our region, each team must compete in two regional events out of the seven available to then qualify for the district championship. In our first regional competition, we made it to the playoffs for the first time ever and got fourth place, and then we won our second regional for the first time ever. This qualified us for the divisional championships, and we even had the 20th highest statistics in the world for one of the scoring categories. And then we went on to win this district championship as well. This district championship was larger than a state championship, as it had the best teams from Virginia, Maryland, and DC. At Woodson, teams such as the crew team and esports team, which aren't recognized as official sports team, have had their names for their state championships recognized on the side of the school. With robotics growing in popularity and with this recent achievement, and now having over 50 active members, we think that we deserve to be recognized along these titles as well. On behalf of Cavbotics 8590, I ask that our district championship be honored alongside Woodson's other championship titles. Thank you for your time.
Michael Parker.
Good evening, Chair Anderson, School Board members, and Dr. Reed. My name is Misha Chernov, and I'm an FCPS employee. I am here to speak about the 24-25 Employee Engagement Survey, and to inform the board, in case you were not aware, that the results are not being posted on the Intranet like previous employee engagement surveys. In the past, employees had the ability to review the survey results on the Intranet and analyze data by school, region, office, and division. This year, I scoured Atlas, which is the FCPS Intranet, and could not find one data point, chart, or graph with the survey results. When I reached out to HR for help finding the survey results on Atlas, I was told if I wanted to review my school's results, I had to contact my principal. I then followed up with HR, asking if there had been a change in how the results are being shared with employees, and have not received a reply. This leaves me with questions. Where are the full survey results? Who has seen them? Why are they not being shared with employees on the Intranet? Is there a plan to make this division-wide data available for employees to review? And who benefits by keeping the survey results off of the Intranet? We did our part by completing the survey. FCPS leadership team, it's your turn now to be fully transparent with your employees by posting the employee engagement survey result data on the Intranet.
Hi. Hi, my name is Tanya Maddox. I served in the military for 29 years, and I moved here from California. And I brought my niece and my nephew with me and their mother. And we moved to, one of Dr. Bennett from Riverside School District told me that when I moved here during the pandemic, that they're going to get a good, Fairfax is going to get a good superintendent. And I said, okay, doesn't bother me with school, as long as the kids are good. We moved from, we used to live in Ridge Drive, Ridgeview Drive, and I moved out of there and moved to Route 1 near Fort Belvo, because I'm military and I wanted to be closer to the base. And we put our kids in the school there. I was frustrated by the school, and my thing is always follow the chain of command. And I followed the chain of command, so I sat down and wrote a letter. And I said, I'm going to write this letter, and I called Dr. Bennett. She says she's going to answer. I said, mm, little on me, she is not going to answer. So I wrote the letter, and I got a phone call from her secretary, and she says, "Dr. Reed requests your honor to be here." And I said, me? You sure? I said, oh, it's going to be on Zoom. And she says, no, she wants you in present. I says, okay. So, me being a chief, I'm ready to fight. This is it. I'm ready. She made me look this little, because she had more everything than I would. As a chief, she reminded me so much of Chappy James, the first four-star black general. She reminded me of that, of her, the way she carried herself, the way she talked to
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening, board members. Superintendent Reed, my name is Cooper Jessup, and I am a badged mentor with the Woodson Robotics Team. I am the second loudest dad with the Woodson Rowing Team. I am a Mantua basketball scorekeeper, and I am the coach of a sixth-grade Lego League team. But tonight, I'm here to talk to you about equity. The board has made several great calls in the name of equity already. Changing the way TJ Admissions Network was a huge win. Equity is one of the reasons given for our current rezoning effort. As a dad, I cheer equally loud for crew and for robotics. When the rowing team were state champions, I was very proud. The team's achievement was commemorated with a prominent display on the front of the school. Robotics team are champions also. Like the rowing team, they participated and succeeded in other events to qualify for their championship tournament. The robotics team, like the rowing team, walked away with the trophies, the medals, and the invitation to the next level of play. Unlike the rowing team, the robotics team are district champions, which means for the entire state of Virginia, all of DC, and the entire state of Maryland. Also unlike the rowing team, the robotics team were invited not to national championships, but to world championships. Unlike the rowing team, the robotics team's achievement was not commemorated on the front of the school. To quote our great leader, Dr. Reed, "We are embarking on a four-year plan to bring robotics teams to all FCPS schools." That is a great plan. We should finish that plan with equity, though, and be equally proud of the success and recognize them the same way as we recognize our other championships, like esports.
Kristi Babuena also signed up to have a video played tonight, but we never received the video, thus there is no video testimony tonight. Chair Anderson, community participation is complete.
Thank you. Agenda item 5.01, Student Representative Matters. I call on Ms. McConan.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the board. Today, I would like to reflect on the SAC meeting that happened this week. The superintendent's advisory council met for the first time this week. They had their first meeting with Dr. Reed, asking questions about current issues. I sent out a survey for this month after the meeting where I asked three questions. How well do you feel FCPS communicates big changes, for example, new policies or schedule adjustments, to students, and what could make that communication clear? Two, what is one way your school could do a better job, including student voice and decisions? And three, how is the new cellphone policy affecting your day, positively or negatively? For the first question, here are two student responses that stood out to me. In my opinion, I know recently that the FCPS community has had a lot of new changes in their policies. Me personally, I've never, I never know of these changes before, because I feel like FCPS doesn't really publicize it. So unfortunately, students like me won't know about these certain policies. I feel like FCPS should definitely start giving more resources for students who are curious about what these, what these new changes are. Obviously, I think a lot of students would like to know what's going on in FCPS. The second response that stood out to me said, "Most new changes are communicated to the student body first as rumors, then they are made official. Communication should be made clear, if it is made directly to students before it impacts them, either through email, or school G, or parent contact. One concern that I continue to hear from students across FCPS, it's not just what decisions are made, but how they're made. Too often, policies are announced without clear communication about the reasoning, student input considered, or how success will be measured. This lack of transparency can leave students feeling disconnected, and sometimes even mistrustful of the very systems that are meant to serve them. Students want to be a part of this process, not just recipients of the outcome. Transparency builds trust, and trust builds stronger policies. By openly sharing how decisions are made, what data is reviewed, and how student voice is included, and what the expected outcomes are, we can contribute to a culture where students feel valued and respected. I encourage the board to continue to prioritize clear communication and genuine student engagement and decision-making. It's not just about the policy itself, but about the process that gets us there." On a related note, I want to speak on behalf of the students of Hayfield Secondary regarding the mold issues that have persisted in their school building. For months, students and families have expressed concerns about the air quality, health effects, and overall learning environment. While short-term fixes have been made, the reality is that students continue to feel as if they're, students continue to feel as if these are temporary Band-Aids rather than a meaningful resolution. As students, we want to feel safe and healthy in our classrooms, not distracted by worries about mold or weather conditions are worsening. The uncertainty has created anxiety, and that lack of clarity can sometimes feel just as harmful as the mold itself. This is why I urge the board and division leadership to provide a clear, transparent plan forward. Students' families deserve to know which specific steps are being taken, what timelines are attached to those steps, how will progress be communicated, and most importantly, how will we ensure that this does not remain an ongoing reactive cycle, but is rather resolved through long-term investment in our school facilities. Students at Hayfield and across FCPS deserve more than patchwork solutions. We deserve to learn in spaces where our health and folks are protected. The board's leadership in communicating concrete next steps can restore trust and provide the reassurance that students, staff, and families need right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. McConan. Agenda item 6.01, Action Item, Certification of Closed Meeting Compliance. In order to comply with Section 2.2-3712D of the Code of Virginia, it's necessary for the board to certify that since the Fairfax County School Board convened a closed meeting on September 25th, 2025, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements, and only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered by the board during the closed meeting. Do I have a motion? Mr. McElveen, thank you. Do I have a second? Mr. McDaniel. All those in favor. Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, I am assuming, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixitt, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, and myself. All those opposed? Abstentions. Mr. Dunn, do you have a vote?
I abstain.
You abstain?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Dunn is an abstention. Thank you. Madam Clerk, will you read the vote?
The vote's 11:01. The motion carries.
Perfect. Agenda item, action, or, Agenda item, Confirmation of Action Taken in Closed Meeting. Item 6.02. I call on Ms. St. John Cunningham for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged with an unlawful act in the community, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel. All those in favor. Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, and myself. Abstentions. Ms. Dixitt. Madam Clerk, will you read the vote? I believe it's 11.
Motion is 11:01. The motion carries.
Perfect. Closed item, or, Closed Motion Number Two. I call on Ms. St. John Cunningham for a motion.
I move to deny the school reassignment appeal of a student who was charged under 18.2-58B.3 of the Code of Virginia as related to an alleged crime that occurred in the community, and to confirm the disciplinary decision of the division superintendent.
Is there a second?
A second.
Dr. Anderson. All those in favor. Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixitt, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, and myself. That's unanimous. Closed motion number three. I call on Mr. McDaniel for a motion.
I move to expel the student who committed a serious offense and violation of School Board policy, and who was charged with multiple weapons-related offenses and violation of the Commonwealth laws.
Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Anderson. All those in favor. Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixitt, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Frisch, and myself. That's unanimous. That's unanimous. Closed motion number four, I call on Ms. Lady for a motion.
I move the School Board authorize legal counsel to make an offer in the case discussed in closed session according to the terms and conditions discussed therein.
Mr. Moon is second. All those in favor? Mr. McDaniel, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Mr. Fresh. Opposed. Ms. Marin, Mr. Dunn, Dr. Anderson, and myself. I believe that's everyone. Will the Clerk please read the vote?
The vote is eight to four, the motion carries.
Thank you. Closed motion number five. Ms. Lady.
I move the School Board authorize legal counsel to settle the matter discussed in closed session according to the terms and conditions discussed therein.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Seismarheiser. All those in favor? Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Moon, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Fresh, and myself. Opposed. Abstentions. Dr. Anderson. Will the Clerk please read the vote?
The vote's 11:01, the motion carries.
We got through them all, guys. Good job. Okay. Action Item 6.03. Advanced Academics Exploration of New Full-Time AAP Center in the Anandale Pyramid. I call on Dr. Anderson for a motion.
I move that the School Board approve to move forward with conducting the necessary community engagement process on the proposal for opening a new middle school AAP center at Poe Middle School.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel. Dr. Anderson, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would. Thank you to Mr. McDaniel for pulling this off of the consent agenda because it does allow me the opportunity to share some additional details that otherwise would not have come to light. In October 20, October 20th, 2020, two form topics were approved by the School Board for future action. One was to establish AAP centers at all middle schools, and the second was to expand local Level 4 programming in all elementary schools. This Board action was consistent with the Advanced Academic Report that was presented to the Board also in 2020 by Dr. Plucker and his team. There's been progress with the local Level 4 expansion, and I believe very few schools are still left to meet that. And I know, Dr. Presidio, I've been tracking that with you. But to date, there's been little movement on the middle school piece, until now. I'm in agreement that all middle schools should be evaluated for this expansion and will be supportive of the forthcoming follow-on motion. However, we need to have a starting point to tackle this longstanding issue. Poe Middle School is a reasonable starting point because of its unique position. Region six, in which Poe Middle School is contained in the Anandale Pyramid, as well as Hayfield and Lewis, it is the only region that there is no middle school AAP center. This requires students who are slated to go to Poe to leave the entire region in order to access programming, which FCPS has determined they require. There's a gap in service continuity. Currently, some Anandale Pyramid students must transfer two times in elementary school in order to receive continuous full-time AAP services. That is a unique occurrence, which does not happen anywhere else in Fairfax County Public Schools. There is no fairness in that, and certainly there is no equity in that structure to students and their families and their caregivers. That is not equitable access to program, that is not equitable access to programming, again, to which FCPS has determined those students are eligible. Students who attend the K-5 local full-time program at Anandale Terrace, Braddock, and North Springfield, they must either transfer for one year to Canterbury Woods to continue sixth grade and then transition back to Frost or attend their neighborhood middle schools in order to receive full-time AAP via enrollment of four middle school classes, which is not quite the equivalent. As it stands, staff has followed the current guidelines, which is outlined in Regulation 3333 and 8130. Staff's proposed timeline is consistent with the Boundary Process Timeline and fulfills the Access to Programming Factor outlined in Policy 8130. Overall, the FCPS commitment is to provide for all students. Still applies to this as well, even though it may not impact thousands of students, but it will impact hundreds of students. We've shared before on this stage that all students deserve our best effort and commitment, so there has to be no minimum to justify advocacy. The staff and principals at Poe and Anandale High School are excited by the possibility to serve students who reside in the Anandale Pyramid in the Pyramid's schools. The Superintendent has shared with me, not once, but twice-
Dr. Anderson, that was your time. I can put you on a go-back.
Yes, please, thank you.
Absolutely. Mr. McDaniel, would you like to speak to your second?
Just briefly, I'll reserve most of my comments for the follow-on motion. I was happy to work with Dr. Anderson on this and the next motion as well. This is a large step in the right direction, and it's been coming for a long time, as Dr. Anderson mentioned, so happy to second the motion.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson, or thank you, thank you, Mr. McDaniel. I see no others working, oh, Ms. Marin, go for it.
Thank you. Well, I applaud Dr. Anderson, the Mason District Representative, for being a true champion for her community. She has always got her eyes out for her students, and I'm glad that the Board can support her. And, you know, for me, I do want to be sure that as we go forward that we're looking at the relevant policies and the regulations, which might seem mundane, but they really do help us be sure that equity is achieved in the future. We don't want this happening again. I also would ask if it's possible for this community engagement process to be rolled into the many, or a part of the many meetings that are happening about boundary conversations. And so, you know, apologies for just sharing this, but I was at last night at South Lakes High School at the Community Boundary Meeting, focusing on South Lakes High and Herndon High, and it occurred to me, wow, there's a lot of meetings coming up and a lot of opportunities. And while that's fabulous, it's also kind of overwhelming, especially since they're all happening right away. And I just wonder, is there a way that in the upcoming, already-scheduled meetings in the Anandale Pyramid, could that engagement work out? Recall, we also have the Western High School Public Naming, the Public Hearing Process, and before we know it, we're also going to have the CIP Public Hearing and the Budget Public Hearing. And so, you know, not only to help the public, you know, be engaged and not be trying to come back and forth, but really so that we're syncing up the holistic view because we know that there are more middle schools that also don't have AAP centers, and this is the most dire. And so, acting now is appropriate, but we also know part of the boundary policy process is to look at access across as one of the factors for boundary changes. So I just wanted to share that if there's a possibility to roll this out as part of the already-scheduled community engagement nights, I think it makes it easier for the public to engage. And I do support this tonight, but I'm not going to support going full sail into putting this in every pyramid. You know, this is a particular follow-up that, you know, has been a long time coming. I think the next piece about are we going to do this in all the pyramids, the Board needs to have a discussion about how we want to offer advanced academic programs. And I'm just not going to green-light, you know, putting programs everywhere, especially not with a budget attached to it. How much is that going to cost? So I will be voting for this main motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Dr. Anderson, for a go-back.
Yes, I'll just kind of finish my statements here. As I shared early, as I began just a little while ago, the Superintendent has shared with me multiple times that she is supportive of this plan. She's also outlined that this measure is also a strategy to bolster the district's plan for increased Algebra I enrollment. We will also benefit in the matter that we will be reducing transportation costs because students won't have to be taken out of Pyramid. Reduced capacity at Frost Middle School will be one of the side, one of the results, which will open the opportunity perhaps of discussing Grade Six in that Pyramid. We will reduce capacity at Glasgow, which currently serves as the only middle school AAP center in the Mason District. So I hope for your support on this this evening, and thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. I will call for the vote. All those in favor? So, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Fresh, and myself. That is unanimous. I call on Mr. McDaniel for a follow-on motion.
Thank you. I move to direct the Superintendent to develop and present to the Board by March of 2026 a comprehensive plan for establishing advanced academic program centers in every middle school in the Division.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Lady. Mr. McDaniel, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would, and I don't want to reiterate all the reasons that Dr. Anderson spoke to on the Anandale issue because they all apply across the other 11 middle schools and the other nine regions that do not have access to this programming. In our Boundary Policy 8130, there's a line in there about equitable access to programming. I was on a town hall last night with the community, and this issue came up of what exactly does that mean? What that means is you shouldn't have to go to a different base school to access various types of programs. AAP is one of those types of programs that we should not have kids being bused out of their base school to attend. And just to kind of give a sense of the scope, Herndon, Madison, Mount Vernon, Centerville, Robinson, West Springfield, Westfield, Hayfield, Lewis, and with the previous motion, Anandale. What this motion will do is ask the Superintendent to come back with a plan to close the remaining nine pyramids, the remaining 11 middle schools, to expand AAP across the entire Division. As we know, Algebra I by eighth grade, that has been pounded into our heads by our very capable Superintendent, Algebra I eighth grade is a key factor for student success, setting not just for the rest of their K-12 education, but their post-education and for life. So I appreciate the support of my colleagues on this motion, and I'm looking forward to the conversation.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Ms. Lady, would you like to speak to your second?
Yes. If anyone followed me on the campaign trail, this is one of the things I talked about often. I feel strongly in high expectations for all learners. I did not realize until I got on the Board how behind we were in mathematics and how some of our schools were not offering Algebra I in a robust fashion. But we've done that work. Under the leadership of Dr. Reed, we've moved the needle on all of our testing, every single discipline, reading, math, science. And we have a lot of gifted learners in our system. The other thing that's become crystal clear is with the boundary work, often the middle schools that are quoted as having the most split feeders in them are our AAP centers because of the very reasons that my colleagues have noted, that students are leaving their neighborhood schools to go to an AAP center for middle school only to come back to their high school because we don't have such a thing at the high school level. During my tenure working at Fairfax County, we created open enrollment in terms of AP honors IB classes at the high school level. Well, we also did that at the middle school level. But I also want to reiterate that when students are in a center, they travel sort of as a pod, okay? So they're in advanced academics in every single subject. And for a lot of our students, that's the level at which they need to be challenged. And then we also have students who can take advanced coursework in some subjects or even perhaps all. But this work is of great importance because I'm tired of busing kids to programs instead of sending kids to their neighborhood school where they have the programs that they need for every single student. So I strongly stand behind this. It's something that I've wanted to do for a long time. I'm also very interested in the October 20, 2020, I guess, Board Follow-On Motion that my colleague referenced in evaluating all elementary schools for Level 4 because that's not being done with fidelity either. So while that's not the motion on the table right now, I do think we need to look to make sure we have Level 4 in every elementary school. Because again, I think that our kids are much smarter today than we were when we were their age. And this is starting at kindergarten, first, second grade. And so I don't think if we don't scaffold this way, we're not going to be ready for how talented our kids are when they're hitting fifth and sixth grade and they're about to embark on middle school. And all of their schools that are in their neighborhood schools should have the programming that they need. So I obviously fully support this. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lady. So we had a whole lot of lights come on all at the same time, so I'm going to do my best to make sure that I hit everybody, but I have everyone. So we're going to start off with Mr. Fresh. Mr. Fresh, we can't hear you. I think you need to be unmuted.
How many years of Zoom, and I still forget to press the unmute button? I apologize. I'm happy to support the motion and the previous motion, only need to speak once. You know, these are essential services that we need to get to all of our students. And with, I think, 10 pyramids that have no middle school AAP center, I think the work is long overdue, and I look forward to getting the plan because that's what we're really voting on, is getting a plan for this. And then we'll be able to kick the tires on it and move forward. So I appreciate the makers of the motion and the previous motion, and look forward to casting my vote.
Thank you. Dr. Anderson.
Yes, thank you. One of the things that I failed to mention, the forum topic that was introduced five years ago now was to expand in all middle schools. And this was also very consistent with the Advanced Academics Programming, I'm sorry, Advanced Academics Report, which was commissioned by the 2019 Board. Recommendation five is to expand to all middle schools. So this is not just due now, it is overdue by five years. This is a long time that we've been waiting to have this conversation. And so I'm very excited to support this motion because it's already something that the Board decided needed to happen five years ago. So we're just doing the work that was not done. This is not new. This is just something the Board already agreed to doing five years ago, October 20th of 2020. So I'm really looking forward to that plan because we do need to provide access to our kids. And this is just the tip of the iceberg when we talk about academies. Academies are not even accessible for many of our kids just because of where they're located. So we have a lot of work to do to fulfill that tenet of the Policy 8130, which is access to programming.
Mr. Dunn.
Well, I just wanted to add one pyramid that was not included on the previous list, which is South County High School Pyramid, does not have an AAP center. It does have a cohort, as does Whitman Middle School. And I get confused, and I've done a lot of research to try to figure out what's the difference between an AAP cohort and an AAP center. They both start with C, some letters in common, but the basic difference is you can leave the pyramid if it's a cohort, and you don't have as much robust attendance and engagement and the same level of resources as a center. So I definitely appreciate the verbiage of this motion, which ensures that there is universal access in every single high school pyramid to equitable and fully-resourced and staffed AAP centers at the middle school level because we have too many kids leaving their high school pyramids, which is a bus-transportation issue, yes, but it's also disrupting students' established friendship groups, established social relationships, and forcing them to move between high schools, between middle schools, between high schools. And that is disruptive to their learning, it's disruptive to student outcomes, and what we're really looking to do is make sure that every child can receive a world-class education wherever they live, whatever school they attend, and thus have the maximum opportunity to achieve the American dream. Thank you.
Ms. Marin.
Yes, well, I appreciate the conversation and the interest of my colleagues in trying to expand access, and I think that's why we are committing to the boundary policy process. One of those tenants of the four is to expand access. I do think the Board needs to be clear about how we continue on with past directives of a Board. While I was on the October 2020 Board at that time, going forward today in September 25th, as if that was just yesterday, it's imprudent. We weren't going through the boundary review process five years ago. We also have not had a public discussion about expansion of AAP centers. We have not had a discussion about how this school division and how this Board wants to offer AAP. If every middle school has an AAP center, are they really centers? Isn't that just providing the quality of instruction that some of our students need? It was mentioned that students go in a pod. Some of my constituents think it's segregation. I have constituents who tell me how after students switch to a different school, their neighborhood friends are left behind. Other kids are left back to feel like they aren't smart enough. So the Board needs to have a real conversation because also from what I'm aware of, which is only my own research because the Superintendent hasn't yet presented this to us, but this is a very old and outdated model. Other school divisions, when they're doing best practices, do not segregate children and bust them other places. I also want to, you know, we're already adjusting for all these different needs. You know, in middle school, the students can take honors, they could take elective, they could take all these other things. So the system is already trying to beef up the needed curriculum. So again, why does, how is it a center? It's not like elementary school. But again, we're just so missing the conversation. But again, we're just so missing the conversation. I also think that we're starting to overload the community. We have to remember that some people are unemployed, they're losing their jobs. It's stressful. We're doing this boundary process. Do we really expect that people will come out and be part of yet another engagement process, not to mention the staff? You know, and I know Dr. Reed, you know, wants to commit to doing everything, but I don't think that doing this fast when we've already got the boundaries and Western High School to be decided in Jan, by January, they're also going to throw in adding a bunch of AAP centers when, again, the board has not had a public deliberation with current data and best practices about what is best to provide advanced academic instruction to children. We know that the superintendent has a 2E, a twice exceptional group. We have not heard those findings. I'm the liaison to the board's academic advising, the public committee, and they're doing all sorts of information that I know this board has not looked at. So I really urge my colleagues to, you know, just hold that enthusiasm for just a few weeks more until we get to the boundary phase part, and then let's see where things shake out. Because why not have more career tech programs? Why is AAP any more important than career tech? There's no HVAC system, no HVAC program in the northern part of, there's all sorts of things we could ask for. So I will not be voting in favor of this motion.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Ms. Dixit.
So thank you, Mr. McDaniel, for bringing this motion. I'm in support of this mostly like fact-finding, trying to find information. I'm open to that. I also want to see the cost implications as we are going to be into a little tough budget situation. So would be interested to see how much of the, if it's cost-neutral, because as my fellow board member said, the busing takes a lot of time and also resources. There's also the other expenses which comes with these AAP centers, but there is benefit of that. My son was in AAP center, but was bit far from the house, and they had to stay in the bus for like 30, 40 minutes every day, both like going to school and coming back. So if he had AAP in his other school, it would have been so much easier with 10 minutes ride at the max. So, and the extracurricular programs, I think, are offered more at the center schools. So they have more access to those competitions and things like that. And it, I think, is open doors to a lot of the students who are not participating in, if we have it in all schools. So my vote would be to definitely figure out how can we do this? And I'm open to the proposal to see what Dr. Reed brings to us by March. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Dixit. Ms. Seismar Heizer.
Thank you. And I appreciate this conversation. First, I want to thank the maker. I only wanted to speak once. Thank the maker of the first motion. I've heard a lot from the Annandale community as well and many of the feeder schools about the importance of an AAP center there. So I thank you for the motion. Yeah. Yeah, I was in the room, yeah. So thank you for bringing that. I'm happy to support it. As far as the follow-on motion, I'm also happy to support this. I think there are many, many initiatives that we want to do and many good conversations we need to have, and we can still have them because this follow-on motion simply asks Dr. Reed to bring back a plan. We will still have to have a conversation about budgetary impacts, if any, and there's time at that point when we have more details of what that plan would look like. I, for one, think it is a great idea to expand access at every middle school to an AAP center. Too often, we have children going out of their pyramid for AAP in elementary school and then coming back to their pyramid, others leaving their pyramid. It is, it is such a cause of children being in and out of their pyramid, adding to transportation costs, but most importantly, impacting a student's ability to maintain those bonds and connections that are so important. And as we've seen over the research over the last 10 years and more, starting to recognize the vital importance of the sense of connection and belonging to students' academic success. Having said that, one of the things that I felt very important, one of the reasons I wanted to be on this board, was to expand access to educational opportunities and expand access to help foster student strengths. Those students who have an academic strength and need to be in an AP center program, a Level 4 center program, deserve to have that at their base school. They shouldn't have to choose between leaving their neighborhood and the academics that they need. And this will allow us to expand that access and remove the barrier. I know too many students who had to choose between providing childcare for younger siblings and going to AAP in elementary school. I know too many students who at that critical middle school years had to choose between leaving friends. I know too many families who are juggling two different schedules because of one child in AAP and one child not. It is really important to provide this access, and I'm really glad that we're exploring that opportunity. So thank you to the makers of the motion. I'm happy to support it.
Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel, for bringing up this follow-on motion. I still do have a couple of questions to ask. I don't know whether it will go to you or Dr. Reed. Would you, Dr. Reed, perhaps? I'll go to Dr. Reed first. If this motion passes, would you interpret this as something that board may want to implement from August of 2026 and possibly may have to, you may have to incorporate in upcoming boundary recommendations? Because this is going to affect the enrollment at the middle schools.
I do not think that starting, bringing a plan forward in March and trying to implement it in August is really five months. It's, it's not likely that any plan would be implemented in the fall of '26. There would need to be more thoughtful planning done. So I think at the soonest, it could be implemented, or at least the beginnings of a plan could be implemented in the fall of '27.
So if this were brought to the board, comprehensive plan were brought to the board in March, and if the board gave you a full blessing, go with the full force, but you would still not be able to implement that by, is that by August of 2020? Is that your assessment?
Yes, sir.
Because I don't want to give a first message out to public that, that with all the boundary discussion going on, whether this is going to be another big factor into that discussion.
So I haven't begun the planning yet because you haven't voted to direct me to do so, but I, I think that it may not be possible to bring every other middle school online, even in the same year. You know, we have to be thoughtful about any significant change of this magnitude. There's a reason likely that this wasn't done a number of years ago, right? So I would really want to be thoughtful about planning this and be thoughtful that whatever I bring you in March, it may be a multi-year phase-in plan of bringing all middle schools on board with a program because we want to make sure the program's thoughtful. There are certification requirements for teachers who teach in the advanced academic program, and there's not, we can't just disassemble current centers and have enough staff to cover every middle school. So there's some, we have to backwards plan, right? Because we want to engineer success for our children and our staff. So I would predict that whatever plan I bring to you in March would not begin the implementation until the fall of '27, and likely it would not be a full-scale move in the fall of '27. It likely will take several years because we have to build the capacity of our staff to provide the programming in all middle schools.
Thank you. Thank you for your thoughtful responses. I think that provides a lot of clarification toward this motion.
Yes, sir.
Ms. St. John Cunning.
Thank you. I am really happy to see this motion. Like many of my colleagues, I believe that every student and all students can raise, can rise to, are capable to rise to the level of expectation that is presented to them. And sometimes that comes at different times, and if you are not at a specific center, then you may not have that opportunity. I think every, every school should be offering an advanced academic program. I don't think we should call it a center. It should be just an advanced academic program across the board for middle schools, eventually across the board for elementary schools, because it does help those students to be in a school that is in their neighborhood. And it also helps them to sometimes be those role models for those kids that are right on that verge of being able to advance. And I've seen that happen so many times. But if you segregate those kids out, then that opportunity is lost. And so we are providing academic support for those kids that need it at that level, but there's also leadership opportunities and the development of that child in other capacities that will make them a strong individual in helping support other students as well. So this is something that I know will take time and that it does have to be done thoughtfully. But I think it's some, we got to start with the first step, and we got to start moving there. And I think that eventually we'll get there. But I am really happy to see this because I have seen this work in other schools that become local Level 4s in elementary schools. And all of a sudden, these kids that would not have gone to the center are taking these advanced classes. And that's what we want. We want that opportunity for all our kids. So I'm happy to support this.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunning. I'm going to go ahead and take a turn real fast, and then we've got some go-backs. The cool part about the implementation of a plan like this means that we don't actually need community engagement. Because if we offer it at every school, then it's not necessarily talking. The other cool part is that it's not actually going to impact boundaries because you're not moving kids and it doesn't impact capacity the same way we can actually keep kids in the base school where we expected them to be. So there are some benefits to this, coming up with this plan. I also see a huge, this was one of the first conversations I had with Dr. Reed after I came on the board, is that I agree wholeheartedly that we need to review our current AAP offerings and figure out what our plan is moving forward. I see this as a best time to plant a tree is 30 years ago or today, is that we're just going to get started here and then have that be, give us the ability to open up a larger conversation in the future. So I wholeheartedly agree with this. I also think that this is essential if we're going to continue along the path that I hope that we're absolutely going to continue related to TJ admissions, is that if we have offerings at every school, or if we're taking kids from every school, then we need to best prepare them to be successful in those locations. So as far as I know, there could potentially also be cost savings related to reducing transportation costs. And in addition, I think that because we're educating children in classes anyways, it's not necessarily an additional cost in the same way that we would expect because of the fact that the students are just identified for a particular class within a school. So I see nothing but positives here. I do necessarily, I absolutely agree that we need to do some work on the backend to make sure that we are still headed in the direction that we want to be headed in, but I think that this is just a stop along that path. So I'm in support. We're moving on to go-backs with Ms. Lady.
So just a couple of points of clarification. I was referencing when kids travel sort of as a pod, that is the AAP cohort in an AAP center. I'm not a huge fan of that. I do believe in the high school model that it might be the kids take everything at the advanced level, but it might be that they don't. But we need high academic expectations of all learners. I do think this is going to be cost-neutral or save money because, as my colleague referenced, transportation's going to change. I think at present, I have kids who could walk to Herndon Middle, but they are on a bus to go to Hughes. So these kinds of things will change, and in terms of boundaries, you're going to your neighborhood school. I also agree, I think people need to fully understand this is a plan that Dr. Reed's going to bring. It's going to be a scaffolded implementation because it takes time. And the other thing I'll say is I was at Marshall High School, we transitioned from AP to IB. And the IB training theory is that, you know, if you teach IB, you teach standard. And so the more teachers we get trained in advanced academics that also teach standard kids, the better the teaching is across the board. Again, the more PD we can get for teachers, it more enhances what's in their toolkit. But I think it's important for people to understand that that would be my vision, and it was always when I was working to build a master schedule, I didn't want someone teaching just AP. I liked people teaching AP, but I liked them teaching some courses scaffolded at different levels. And I think it's important. I think it helps our kids, and I think it helps the teaching that's taking place. So again, just wanted, you know, and ultimately, we would lose the term center. You would just go to your middle school because that's, it would have all the programming that you need. I think it's time that we start making sure that our neighborhood schools have all the programming that our kids need, instead of taking them away from their neighborhood schools because of a program that's, that they don't have. So again, I'm very excited about this motion, but do understand that this is going to take some time, and I'll be patient in that process.
Thank you, Ms. Lady. Mr. Dunn.
I just wanted to highlight, I love this as a template for future issues that we come across that we want to address, whether it's world languages or CTE programs or other things, because this is all about establishing a plan, having the board review the plan, and then executing against the plan for a number of years. And as I talked ad nauseam at the last board meeting, I really like plans because without plans, you know, it's just a bunch of people going in different directions. So a plan is something that you can put on paper, you can publish to the public, and then hold FCPS accountable to, accountable to over, over a number of years and perhaps over a number of superintendents because sometimes progress takes a very long time. I think this is great, and I hope this does become a model for other advances, progress that we're looking to make in order to ensure universal access, equal access to programming, no matter what high school pyramid or what neighborhood you live in.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Marin.
So again, I support expanding access to opportunities. I also support planning out the work and the resources to make that happen. You know, in the near future, reviewing the calendar ahead leading up to March 2026, we have the boundary work scheduled to complete in January 26, the Western High School programming at the same time. Just got word that our Joint Facility Review Committee, of which myself and another member are on with the Board of Supervisors, a new committee that is tasked with finding budget savings on our facilities. That's going to start at the end of October, and there's like five or six meetings between then and March that are going to need our staff in budget, facilities, and operations to help us make the best case to the Board of Supervisors about where we can find savings. That's going to take a lot of work, and we have a companion committee on technology. We are also going to be developing the budget, which again, last year included no new investments in developing the comprehensive, the capital improvement program, general assembly advocacy. So, you know, we had conversations about expanding world language, and we could have all the best ideas, but if we don't have money and time, we are really just, it's not going to happen. So I'm concerned that this is putting forth a new initiative. When the superintendent last year presented in her budget, a budget without any new initiatives, and we didn't get $120 million, and now we're approving a new initiative with $0 attached to this. I heard more training for PD, looking at International Baccalaureate as a model. Wonderful program, very expensive. We're going to need time. And by the way, all of our elementary school teachers, they're still learning how to implement the brand-new reading program that is in year two. So, you know, we need to do the work to get the money. Sorry, I didn't mean to do that. But we just, I just don't understand how we're going to do this well. And again, the best practice is not to create centers, from what I understand, because I haven't been publicly briefed about it.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. I will call for a vote on the motion, which will momentarily be on the screen. All those in favor? Mr. McDaniel, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunning, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Ms. Seismar Heizer, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Fresh, and myself. Those opposed? Ms. Marin. Will the clerk please read the vote?
The vote's 11-1. The motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item 7.01, performance review, instructional program EL 9, monitoring report. Each year, the school board assesses the superintendent in part on the basis of the school division's reasonable progress towards achieving the 2023 to '30 strategic plan goals and adherence to a set of 13 executive limitations found on pages 14 through 31 of the board's Strategic Governance Manual. The superintendent provides annual monitoring reports to the board for each executive limitation. The board then votes on whether the provided report is in compliance or if corrective action is needed. I call on Dr. Reed for a monitoring report on Executive Limitation 9, Instructional Program.
So thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, and public. As the chair just mentioned, I'll be presenting Executive Limitation 9, which discusses the instructional program here in FCPS. So paraphrasing this evening, the executive limitation- here in FCPS. So paraphrasing this evening, the executive limitation nine talks about maintaining a program of instruction for all students within the division's strategic plan goals. And at the time of this report, to the best of my knowledge, information and belief, I've gathered information and evidence that I believe supports compliance with the board's executive limitation associated with this topic and would like to share some highlights this evening. There are currently 11 areas of executive limitation nine. On the slide before you, we have items one through five. And on the second slide, we have items six through 11. And for those watching at home, the entire monitoring report is attached to board docs and feel free to follow along. This evening, I will highlight some of the newly added or updated areas of executive limitation nine. So one of the things we looked at on the May 22, 2025 budget follow-on motion update, I wanted to provide an update on that as it was an opportunity to report back in this executive limitation and that was the request. So as you see in the chart, the, both the elementary special education department chairs and AARTs remained level this school year. So the follow-on motion update generates information that was consistent with the board direction. On the next slide, under new and newly added information, we have some updates regarding our work around inclusion. And again, there's a lot in the report that's not new or updated, but that we consistently manage, but these are new year over year. We continue to partner with our inclusion experts to support schools as we identify areas of growth. This work includes improvements to the IEP process, our staffing models to remove systemic barriers to inclusion, and having a series of asynchronous professional development modules on inclusive practices for all staff, some of which will be rolled out, I believe, later next month in October, which is our Division Professional Development Day. In January, the superintendent's advisory committee for twice exceptional programming was launched and that was a new committee last year. The committee is working on reviewing current structures and practices that impact our twice exceptional learners and offering recommendations at increasing access and development of unique programming for our twice exceptional students. One of the outcomes of that group was also information that was handed out at back to school nights this evening, or this evening, this fall for back to school nights, as well as creating definitions and a framework that will build on the twice exceptional handbook that was developed several years ago. Another bit of new or newly added information were the secondary grading and reporting guidelines that were updated for school year 25, 26. The FCPS learning model, which represents the instructional visit, vision for best practices in teaching and learning. And this model was updated over last year's to match up and align with our strategic plan goals, as well as teacher evaluation performance standards. The basal resources that were purchased last year were new, kindergarten through sixth grade and will be continued to be used. And our English language development common assessments will, we fully implemented this school year. And these help us monitor our multilingual learner student progress. Those are all new pieces in our instructional programming. Another section of new or newly added information, staff is working to develop a plan for expanding our CTS programming and services, our career and transition support programming and services. As we've noted, we've expanded access to Algebra I in sixth grade this year. And we continue to enroll more students in Algebra I by eighth grade with the same very high Algebra I pass rates in grades six through eight, as you've seen previously. We're also just really excited about the opportunity to provide these opportunities for our learners. At, as we shared in previous academic matters, our Algebra Power Up, which occurred during the summer for the first time this year, combined our AVID strategies with a transition into Algebra I for eighth grade and middle school. And finally, to support learning over the summer, we created a summer learning resources webpage for families who have students currently in grades K through six. One of the things we're working on right now is making sure that our younger students are able to take their devices home more regularly. That way they spend less time on screen in the classroom. And if they want to use screen time for support at home, that is preferable at this point, as well as making sure next summer, those will be accessible to students to take home for the summer to match our resources online. So at this time, Madam Chair, this concludes the summary of the monitoring report for executive limitation nine. I want to add one point just at the end, because this is our instructional executive limitation. I want to make sure that the board knows that I'll be drafting and bringing for your consideration an increase in our graduation requirements around mathematics as part of an instructional program strategy, which would start with next year's seventh grade class. But I do think we need to think about requiring Algebra Trig as a graduation requirement. A number of, a majority of other states already require that. Virginia does not, but it is a key skill set for our students to have that level of mathematic understanding when they leave Fairfax County Public Schools. For trade and technical school, it's a necessity to pass apprenticeship exams. It's a necessity. It's the foundation on which the SAT exams are written. It's a gatekeeping course for many chemistry and physics courses. So I think that even if our state is not requiring it as a graduation requirement, it's, I think, plausible that we join 40 other states in this country and require it here in Fairfax County Public Schools. So I'll be drafting that with our instructional services team with a phase in approach because we want to make sure our students are aware of the requirement in plenty of time to be able to complete that requirement. So, Madam Chair, thank you for the opportunity to present EL9.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I now call on Ms. Dixit for a motion.
I move that the school board finds that the superintendent is in compliance with executive limitation number nine, instructional program. I further move that the school board approve the monitoring report based on the superintendent's reasonable interpretation of executive limitation number nine, instructional program as outlined in the strategic governance manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Ms. Dixit, would you like to speak to your motion?
I would just like to say that Dr. Reed, you know, the algebra in, you know, eighth grade is, is a step in the right direction, but what you envision is actually the trig and algebra as a graduation. I totally agree full 100%. We are in that competitive world right now. Our students are going to be facing a lot more challenges and, you know, just to get a decent job and with the changing environment. So I think it's, it's amazing and I, I definitely would like to see this moving forward.
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Dixit. The current research says math limits 84% of your career choices and Algebra Trig is a cornerstone of that. And if our students are completing Algebra in eighth grade, geometry in ninth, that gives them three years still to, right? You could be in Algebra Trig by 10. So I think it's a very reasonable requirement as long as we start with a phase in.
Mr. McDaniel, would you like to speak to your second?
Just that, you know, we're, this board is getting to the point where we're about going to be halfway through our term. And I'm speaking for myself. I know when I get to the end of my term, I want to look back and really be able to point to instances where we keep raising the bar of academic expectations. And that's really what this EL, what I really focus on with this EL. It just happened that this EL came tonight after the previous conversation that we just had. It was totally random. But you've been very consistent at raising the bar on academics across the entire division. So happy to second and support.
Ms., Mr. Dunn.
Thank you. Can you provide more information on the current status of the implementation of the Science of Reading, the Benchmark Literacy Curriculum?
Sure. We continue, actually, it's year two of the basal curriculum and our elementary team has been working really hard. The reading plans also, which are a requirement, I think the state requires those K8 and Fairfax County requires those to be added for the ninth through 12th graders because we know that not every student benefited from the early literacy curriculum work and the Science of Reading because it's a very recent initiative in the last several years. Our elementary staff have, I think, this year seen the, the year two of the curriculum is much smoother. I think teachers have become more comfortable with it and students are more comfortable knowing the routines because they've had a year of practice of those routines prior to the next year. So we're excited about some of the progress. And as you recall, Mr. Dunn, last year was the first year we had multilingual student paired materials for literacy, which we've never had in the division previously. And so that's a body of work that our multilingual staff in concert with our general education staff have really done a fabulous job of learning how to braid that into our literacy work. So we're hoping for much stronger data this year because it, you know, it's brand new last year. So we're really hoping to see some growth this year.
That's great. Can you advise, like, what level of complaints you've received about the benchmark curriculum? I've received a few, but certainly not the same volume as last year.
So I think that we have students at times that have said that it's not the most exciting literature and I would probably agree. It's teaching, reading, right, and writing. It's also requiring a lot more writing than we had traditionally been doing, which I really appreciate. I think where we as staff, I think, have one year of its use, I, I think there's a lot, it's a lot smoother than it originally was. So I think I've received fewer concerns about it this year. And I also want to note that there is no perfect curriculum, right? That they're going to be, we hope children are reading at home, that they're utilizing our public libraries and our school libraries. Our librarians work really hard to make sure we have books that are high interest for children. So if they're not seeing some of the literature in the benchmark that might, you know, spark that curiosity, that they'll find those books in our libraries. I think we have some of the best librarians in the country and I've seen some of the book collections and they're amazing. So I think there's always a balance, but I haven't heard as many concerns this year as I did last year. I agree with you.
Can, can you advise, I, I know that there was some discussion in past board meetings about introducing a new math curriculum that might, I don't think it's called the Science of Math, but is, do you have plans or are you already implementing a new math curriculum in our elementary schools?
We are still in that selection process. We're piloting a few different curricula. We know that a high quality curriculum is critical. We have to have that. And I, I know there's not a science of math, but I'm going to share that direct explicit instruction of mathematics is just as important as direct explicit instruction of literacy. So I think there's a high need for our young learners to master basic math facts because your ability to have fluent numeracy is important, just as fluency in reading is important. So more to come on a new math curriculum, but we should have something on board for the fall of 26.
For those new math curricula, are you looking at best practices from Finland, Singapore, South Korea, countries that have, you know, high achievement and, and math outcomes?
I know the committee is looking at a lot of those, at the best practice for sure and research-based strategies. I know that the TIMS report, which is the international report on math and science, one of the issues they continue to raise year after year with the United States is how much review we do. We tend to review more than most other countries. So that often, as our children get older, our scores become less and less competitive. So I think what we want to do is make sure that whatever curriculum we select, that, you know, that we're able to minimize some of the reviewing because the new content in mathematics is also very important to get to.
I, I met with an elementary school leadership recently and they mentioned that they had lost seven instructional staff as a result of the budget cuts last year that were mentioned early in your report. Some of those were classroom unders, some of them were, you know, positions lost due to the trade-offs to maintain
Right.
the ART full-time in the sped chair. And I just wanted to ask, you know, we're, we're asking in that context for that school and other schools in a similar position, for them to achieve the same mission with, you know, seven people is a lot, right? In an elementary school, that's fairly small. How, you know, is, is there anything that we can do to, to bolster staffing, right, within the limits of, of our budget to enable, you know, elementary schools to have the resources they need? Because among the challenges are that you'll have a part-time ART or a full-time ART doing, you know, the, the young scholars and many other missions. And it's just not, and each of those missions is, is a full person, right? So how can we, you know, make sure that we keep on track, especially with advanced math and other important kind of division-wide goals if, if we're asking them to, to, we're not cutting back the requirements, right? But we're, we are cutting back the staff.
So I think that that's something we're going to have to look at in our upcoming budget discussions is how we allocate staff. And the, I think we clearly need to make sure that our classrooms are focused on first, right? But I think that's a definite conversation we're going to have to have with the budget moving forward. When we're not fully funded, it creates a situation that results in tough choices.
And I, I think in, in the current budget environment, we, we can't expect more money given the cuts to Medicaid and other federal programs that is going to just put a huge hole in the state budget. So I, I just ask, you know, not to come up with any solutions off the cuff, but definitely for us to think about how to be more efficient or make sure that we are adjusting the requirements at the school-based level if, if we're not providing them all, all the staff rather than stretching staff then and asking them to meet unrealistic objectives. Can you talk more about what we're doing to help students who are falling behind? I mean, we've, we've talked in the past about the Spring Sprouts Program, which is a great program, but as we've also talked about, that mainly helps the school in terms of reducing the chronic absenteeism, but it doesn't necessarily catch up the student in terms of learning. And I do worry about students who fall behind, that we don't necessarily have a system to bring them back up onto grade level. So is, is, is there a plan, since I like plans, that could be developed in a system that could be implemented or considered or thought about to, to help students who do fall behind or who may arrive at FCPS's door already behind and, and, and there might not be the resources, especially at the middle school and high school level, to get them back up to speed?
Yes, sir. So one of the plans that we did have was our high-impact tutoring and that's really garnered some very positive results. I just saw a note this evening. Ms. Lemon, do you want to just share quickly, if you can bring that email up? I think you were copied on it. Well, Ms. Lemon brings that email up. I think we did have a comprehensive division-wide plan for high-impact tutoring and I'd like her to share the data. And can you give me a sign when you're ready?
I'm ready.
All right, let's hear it.
So for 2024, 2025, students who did not receive tutoring in reading averaged a six-point increase on their SOLs. And students who did receive tutoring from our All-In Virginia High-Impact Tutoring Program, they averaged 14 points increase. And then with mathematics, again, students who did not receive tutoring, they did an average of eight-point growth. And students who were participating in the tutoring did a plus 15. So really supported the acceleration that we were looking to get.
So our high-impact tutoring plan worked. However, that money is no longer in the budget. So we're going to have to look at how that plan came to be and how we might otherwise fund and support that work because we know it works.
The importance of getting fully funded budget.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. That was your time. I can put you on a go back. Dr. Anderson.
I'm very glad to follow that high-impact tutoring because as I reviewed my notes from last year, that was one of the questions that I had asked. What is the impact of the high-impact tutoring? And so thank you for sharing that. And it would be great if that was just embedded in here as well.
We just got the note tonight.
You just got it tonight, okay.
I believe it just came in like two hours ago, just when I saw it.
It wasn't in time. Just kind of going through what is here, if you could speak a little bit more clearly to the strategy of homework that you've outlined on page two, I believe, of the report, where you're talking about homework and the grading of homework. I want to be sure that community and staff are clear on what those expectations are because I know we've had much more extensive discussions about it, which might be helpful for all to hear.
Yes, ma'am. We did reinstitute or reinforce the idea of homework and I'm just trying to pull up my page here real quick. And I think that it's a critical to pull up my page here real quick. And I think that it's a critical skill set for our young people to learn. And the younger the age that that behavior is practiced, the better. I don't know about the rest of you, but I take things home still to work on on occasion. And it's something that's an important, really executive functioning skill we're looking for among our youngest learners and our middle and high school students. We put some guardrails around the expectation, which is we should never have homework that is anything other than practicing something that's already been taught. In other words, it's an opportunity to practice a skill that's already been presented, modeled, practiced, and worked on in a class. It also can be used for reading at elementary. I think that children become better readers when they read more. There's a lot of research around that. We know that fine and performing arts students often are asked to practice instruments at home, or practice lines, or moves. We know that many student athletes practice some kind of a sport or activity outside the school day. It's a natural part, really, of learning and growth. Not all learning happens directly in the classroom. So, we want to recognize that effort as well. And recognizing that effort within our formative grading structure made the most sense. So, I know that there's, you know, a little back and forth right now because parents are busy and so forth. And I'm going to say really that it's really something that we expect students should be able to manage, even if parents are busy, right, that this is a skill we hope and expect, that our, that our young middle and high school students are able to complete homework as a part of a learning experience here with us.
Sure, absolutely. Can you speak to the point regarding equity? Because there's conversations that if a student has maybe, Mr. Dunn, as the parent, they're going to go home and review everything, and it's going to come back 100% correct. And if a student happens to have me as a parent, and I'm busy doing other things, and they don't have that additional support, how are we addressing that piece, which I know is a high concern for many communities?
So, many of our parents, who are the busiest parents, have said they want their students to have homework, because they want them to have an opportunity to practice skills, rather they're working, you know, two or three jobs, or taking care of other family members. But there's a, I think we make a lot of assumptions about what families do or don't want in terms of homework or rigor for their students. And I, I think that in the parent groups, and I meet with many, many different parents across the division each year, there's really a hope that they are able to see what their students are working on, and can partner with their children to be successful in school. For those students who have less adult support when they get home, again, the expectation is that homework is not new learning, but it's practice of learning that's already occurred in the classroom.
And they won't necessarily be penalized for not being 100% correct, but rather the effort of completing the work would be the focus?
That's correct. In particular, reading logs, right? There's, I don't know how you incorrectly read for 20 minutes unless you just don't do it. But, you know, we have, like I said, fabulous library collections to enable access to high-quality literature for our children. For our music program, you know, I've kind of stated that, but it's not intended to be a got-to or a penalty. It's intended to be something that builds strong, healthy habits for our young people.
A habit of mine, thank you. Last year, when we completed this, I also asked questions regarding rigor, how that would be measured, and to ensure consistency across the division. One of the things, one of the strategies that you shared that would be utilized are the Common Assessments.
Right.
Please provide an update of that. How is that going? What is that showing? Because I don't see that being reflective here.
Yes, ma'am. And that is critical, because we heard some concerns that if we're in a certain part of the county, a particular math class was not as rigorous as in another part of the county. And we wanted to spell those rumors and concerns, because we believe that we have high rigorous instruction across all schools in the county, and should be accessible to all children. As far as an update on the Common Assessment Initiative, I'm going to call on Ms. Lemon. I know you've been very involved in that. Do you have a minute or two just to kind of, where are we with that, and what are we expecting as a result of that?
Sure. We are having windows for common assessments for different subject levels. And then we have reporting out to the regions and the schools, who's participated in those common assessments during that window. And then schools have the ability to really work together, to kind of benchmark one another, and to work with their regions. And it also supports our team and resources, and seeing what schools might need additional supports and resources to ensure that, you know, children are growing and moving.
We also have it on our dashboard.
And I would love to see that.
Of course you would.
Is that something that you can share with us? Again, that doesn't have to be entire dashboard, but a screenshot, because I would love to get a sense of what is happening with those common assessments, because I believe from what Ms. Lemon just shared, are they optional? Because you said some schools have completed them, and some schools have not. Can you speak to that, please?
The common assessments are not optional. There's just a window. So, there's a window for which the school can choose to take the test.
Okay, thank you for that. So, what are we finding? Where are we having great success and consistency across the division, and where do we have more work to do?
So, I would want to, before I speak publicly about that, go back to the dashboard and be very clear about that. But I'm happy to provide, in an upcoming Friday letter, a static point-in-time picture from the dashboard.
Yes, that would be very much appreciated.
Yes, ma'am.
One of the things I also noticed here is a professional development regarding rolling gradebook, which I think is important, because I don't think we have had fidelity with utilizing rolling gradebook with its intent. It's just been something that we say, but it hasn't had the provisions behind it. But what I did not see is what is going to be provided for the middle schools that are still using rolling gradebook, because we have high school courses, high school credit courses happening at the middle school level, which will follow those students and on their transcripts. Can you speak to that a little bit, please?
Sure. Yeah, the, we did not want to add one more thing to middle school teachers this year, so we're not doing any requirement to use a particular gradebook at middle school at this time. If they are teaching high school courses, I believe that's where they work with their high school colleagues. But I'll turn to Dr. Presidio, because the rolling gradebook is an anomaly to me here. So, I'll have Dr. Presidio talk about it.
Yeah. So, I think as Dr. Reed already mentioned, the focus for rolling gradebook implementation division-wide is for high schools in school year '26, '27. And that came out of the work that the board did last December, passing the new grading and reporting policy, wanting to get consistency with practices. But as Dr. Reed mentioned, we're starting with high schools in '26, '27. So, those are the teachers that we're focusing on with coaching, support, professional development. Individuals at the middle school level can choose, based on conversations with their administrative team, whether or not to use a rolling gradebook. Some were previously, some were not. So, if teachers need help with anything, whether it's technical setup of a rolling gradebook, and the student information system, or best practices, we're more than happy to provide onsite support. But we're not doing any coordinated professional development for middle schools, because we want them focused on some of the other priorities, like algebra by eighth grade.
Sure, absolutely. And I don't disagree with giving them the opportunity to focus on some of their priorities, but there is a gap. There is a gap, because we do have a number of teachers at that level who are using the rolling gradebook, which may not be to students' advantages without the proper training. I'll take a go-back, please.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, Dr. Reed, thanks for the presentation. Have a few questions regarding basal resources. I'm looking at your report, page number four at the bottom. I think we all do remember that adoption of social studies basal resources was postponed, or delayed, being delayed, due to the budget adjustments we had to make. And so, schools, I guess teachers are purchasing one-year digital subscriptions? Is that?
Actually, the division purchased one-year digital
Okay, so, I'm trying to see whether
subscriptions, which is what we had the year before.
Whether that actually resulted in savings?
We believe it was far less expensive than ordering the basal.
Far less expensive.
I don't know exactly what the numbers were, but I know the point of this was not to purchase
Correct.
spend more money. So, Dr. Presidio, do you have a cost for the digital subscriptions for one year?
No, not off the top of my head, but I'd be happy to get that for you.
Part of your Friday memo.
Yes, sir.
And also, since a couple of colleagues already mentioned about, you know, budget, another difficult budget year, what impacts would not having a basal resources adopted for another year? How would that impact us in teaching and learning?
In social studies?
Or any, any basal resources?
Well, I think that right now, the lack of basal resources in mathematics will continue to be problematic for our ability to provide the best math experience possible. That's consistent. We talk often about being a school system, and not a system of schools, and having a basal curriculum. I think Mr. McElveen and I, I was trying to remember on the first day of school, or maybe it was the second, we were going through classrooms, and actually at different schools, and very much so saw very similar content in our literacy curriculum, not, you know, in a pragmatic way, but we were able to see concepts taught across grade levels, which is what a school system has. And when you have that level of basal curriculum, you have that ability to see that across an entire county. So, I think, you know, we've waited one year for math. We postponed social studies. I don't think we can do both in the same year. So, social studies may flip behind math. But that's in a budget that's as tight as ours right now. I think we're going to have to make choices that are difficult.
I mean, we're not, you know, deliberating budget right now, but
We're not.
if it comes to that, if it comes to that, I'm hoping that we'll have a plan to be able to provide, and to support the students and teachers deserve. With that said, I, another question that I have is, the very last sentence on the same page at the bottom, is schools have the options to purchase additional print textbooks? So, are you, are you implying that all the schools have the necessary resources to purchase additional print textbooks?
So, there's a longstanding tradition here, which I think I learned about in my second year here, where we don't buy textbooks for every student at the secondary level. But if schools want to, like, there is an adopt, well, I'm going to let Dr. Presidio explain it, because you're the one that explained it to me as I was asking a lot of questions. So, Dr. Presidio, the longstanding instructional services.
Yeah, the short answer to this is, this particular sentence is meant to indicate that if a school was short a number of needed textbooks, hard copy textbooks, that they would use their instructional supply allocation that they get to purchase those additional textbooks. So, for example, maybe they have an increase in student enrollment. Maybe some of the textbooks were lost or damaged over the last seven years of the adoption cycle. That's why we provide the schools with those site-based funds to be able to make those purchases. We just wanted everybody to know, given the fact that we delayed the new adoption of materials, that we extended the contract so that we could purchase new print materials, as well as digital materials off that contract.
You know, what I'm trying to get at is whether you see a, you know, among, among different schools, wide different practices of purchasing printed copies.
No, that's not been the case. We've always, whenever we've done adoption, we've given clear guidance about the expectation. And different times, it's been different. Sometimes it was, there needed to be just a class set of hard copy materials, and students could check those out if they needed to check them out and take them home. Other adoptions, we did class sets, and then individual copies for students. And the major difference of why we've done it differently at different years is how much funding we had available to purchase the materials, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you. And first, I just wanted to pass on a compliment, I know, look on her face, that I heard from two E families as they started the school year, and they got an email from the ART to the two E families specifically saying, "Please let us know how I can help you. I'm here to support your student." And they were very pleasantly surprised and happy, because I think that's the first time they felt acknowledged in that way. At least, that's what some of them shared with me. So, I wanted to pass that on to your team, that the efforts are being seen. And Felks, I know sometimes the good stuff doesn't get passed down, so I wanted to pass it to you. I am very excited about this report. I think we're doing a lot of really good things. A couple of things, when we talk about the basal curriculum, to pick up from my colleague on social studies, I think it's important, as we're moving into, as budget chairs are moving into the budget season, you know, I had a brief conversation with Ms. Burden about this earlier, about talking about what the impact last year was, and the things that we couldn't do, and what that means, and how the, you know, the literacy basal curriculum, for example, that the board funded a few years ago, and the impact that has made.
Right.
Right? And the impact of having to delay the social studies curriculum, and perhaps delay it even longer, depending on where our budget situation falls. I just think that knowledge is power. So, I think that is important. I am thrilled about the algebra work that we're doing, and the early math work we're doing. And I'm thrilled about the literacy work that we started before that. I still have the question around literacy work that's come up before, for the students who didn't benefit from the science of reading, the ones in middle and high school. I had three meetings today with special education families, and this came up for some of our students with dyslexia, who are now in high school, but still behind in reading level. So, I would encourage you, you don't need an answer today, but encourage you and your staff to think about, especially those who are behind into later grades, as what are we doing to target interventions for them? I understand that some of the budget, you know, we don't have the high-impact tutoring, but there are students who missed out on that. So, that's the first thing I would encourage you to look at. I still think that there's room for understanding about dyslexia and how it manifests. And it's great that we're talking about textbooks and books. We've got to make sure in our language that we speak, that we don't unintentionally make someone feel bad if they're an audiobook, or they're a different type of learner. And I think there's a little bit of that happening, from what I'm hearing from families. So, I think it's important to talk about access to, you know, all of these materials, not necessarily reading. So, that is the first thing I would mention. I think obviously, reading is very important, but however people can learn is the important thing to mention. I am very happy to see this work on inclusion. As we've talked about before, the data is clear, and the research is clear around these models. I will say, in some of my meetings today, there is still some concern about the fidelity of implementation of IEP processes and IEP goals in general. So, I would encourage you, I'm glad that we're making improvements on the IEP process, but I encourage you to look at improvements on fidelity of implementation.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Seismarheiser. Ms. St. John Cunnings.
Thank you. I wish the, I encourage the public to go and look at the report, because it does have a lot more information. And I'm just going to refer to a couple of pages here. First of all, great that high school instructional staff are getting that professional development on the rolling gradebook. But just for clarification purposes, can you explain that to our public? Because I think some people don't know what that means.
Yes, ma'am. I'm going to have Dr. Presidio explain it.
So, a rolling gradebook differs from a traditional gradebook. And I think most of us, when we went to school, probably were on a traditional gradebook, that at the end of a quarter, or at the end of a semester, the grading window would close, and you would have whatever grade you had for that term. And then the next term would start over fresh, and you would earn a new grade. And then at the end of the year, all those grades would be averaged together. A rolling gradebook stays open from the first day of school till the last day of school. And it gives the opportunity for students to make up work that maybe they didn't master, you know, the month previously, or the quarter or semester previously. So, it gives them more opportunities to demonstrate mastery. And, you know, one of the things that we've found that our teachers and our administrators really advocate for is that we believe that all of our students are capable of achieving at the highest standards. But we know that learning sometimes takes a different amount of time for, you know, different individuals. So, the rolling gradebook gives students that flexibility, that if they didn't master something in the first quarter, but they did it in the second quarter, that their grade doesn't have to be averaged against their performance from a prior quarter. Now, they've been able to demonstrate it. They can get credit for that, and they can continue to move on. So, that's the main difference with the rolling gradebook. And then there's, you know, technical things with the setup and everything, but that's the main difference.
Thank you. And then on page five, Dr. Reed, can you speak a little bit about the summer learning resource webpage that you provided for families? Because I think that was a great resource, and I really love that it was provided in different languages.
Yes, ma'am. That was a new initiative this past summer, and we hope to build on that for the coming summer. But it's really an opportunity for children not to lose a lot of the gains they'd made during the school year. There's a term "summer slide" that's often attributed to students There's a term, summer slide, that's often attributed to, uh, students learning, uh, their grade level material and then leaving school for six to eight weeks and then coming back and not maybe remembering everything. So we wanna make sure, and next summer as well, we're gonna be building out those resources and making sure that our children are able to take a device home over the summer if their family chooses to and be able to access those resources to maintain, um, at least in the core academic areas, uh, an opportunity to practice over the summer. What we discover, I think, and what research tells us, is one of the most important resources we have is time. And so how we choose to use time, um, either during the school days, before and after school, summers, weekends, breaks, um, can make all the difference for children that are either behind or children, uh, that have a desire to explore new content. Um, we're really examining all the ways in which we can use time differently.
Thanks. I love that. And then, okay, page seven and eight. World languages. I think there's some really, um, I just would like for you to speak to the cohort of the students that earned the seals of bi-literacy because I just think that's pretty amazing.
So we're really excited about that. Um, the opportunity to earn a seal of bi-literacy really recognizes our multilingual students in particular for their strengths. Um, and not seeing being multilingual as a challenge as much as it is a strength. And I had a good time, even our student, um, board member, um, Faith, which she's, was at SAC this week. I asked the SAC group, like, how many of the students in the room spoke more than one language? Were, and it was easily two-thirds of the students in the room. And I think we need to recognize that many of our young people do speak multiple languages and that is a strength. So, um, I, I think that the opportunity and the promotion of the seal of bi-literacy is something we're gonna continue.
Yeah, so just for the record, four thousand and forty-one of our students, uh, received the Virginia Seal of Bi-Literacy. And that's an award that's made by the State Department of Education. And that's, I think that's pretty impressive.
It's, yeah, over four thousand. I think it's incredible. Um, so thank you for noting that. I'll make sure the team is aware of that.
Um, and again, these are all things that, you know, were in the report and were not in the presentation. The question I was gonna ask you is, you know, the success rate that we've seen with that, you know, high-impact tutor, tutoring and how we could expand and support that and the fact that there's no funding. Um, I'll, I'll just go, I mean, if you could just read some of the statistics, it's on page fifteen. Um, in terms of what the impact was and their annual typical growth, because that's very impressive.
So I'm going to, um, on page fifteen of the report, um, and this was the All Inver Virginia funding, which we were actually very grateful for and made extraordinary use of. So we did have, um, I'm not sure which data you want to prefer that I read, uh, but we did do in-person tutoring. We had over ten thousand students that were, um, tutored. Um, of those who participated in the reading tutoring, thirty-eight point nine passed their reading SOL with an average growth of fourteen points from the prior year, which I think, um, is really an extraordinary growth point uh, for our, our young students. And the math, again, they had an average growth of fifteen points from last year's math SOL. So on average, students in grades three through eight, who were below grade level in reading and received high-impact tutoring, made a hundred and thirty-four percent progress to their annual typical growth. Um, which, um, that's incredible. Um, and on average, elementary students in grades three through six, who were below grade level in math and received high-impact tutoring, made a hundred and fourteen percent progress in their annual typical growth, as well as, um, close to four thousand, three thousand nine hundred and fifty-three students or forty-one point six one percent that received tutoring, had fewer absences this year compared to last year. I think it matters when students feel like there's, you know, that level of support. Um, because we're often drawn to something, we're motivated by doing something that feels good. And when you're tutored and feel like you have more of a mastery and you're confident, more confident as a learner, I think it's easier to show up, right, every day. So it, it's really, um, shared some definitely positive, uh, data for us.
I just think that this is the kind of thing that we have to highlight to our funders and say, we have seen and we have the data that shows this works. But right now, we don't have funding for it. So if we wanna continue to be the stellar school system that we are, we need to be able to fund this programming. Um, then finally, I would like to you to speak a little bit along kind of the same trajectory, but this is on page seventeen, the Twilight Program, because I think that's also really important for some of our older students, particularly some of the kids at work.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so the Twilight Program really is a flexible credit recovery program and supports students on-time graduation. And we had twelve high schools participate this year, serving three hundred and forty-four students, which marked a twenty-nine percent increase over the previous year. Of the students involved, ninety-five percent were either promoted or graduated because of their coursework. And this achieved the primary goals of the program, wherein four hundred and twenty-six courses were completed over the twelve high schools.
Thank you. I think I could probably point to a lot more, but those were the few that I just really wanted the public to, to hear and to listen, to see the success that we are, um, reaching and thanks to the hard work of all of the staff in our system. So thank you for highlighting that.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Dixit.
Dr. Reed, I just have a quick remark or maybe you need, uh, get your feedback. Uh, you know, AI is in everything, in everyday life. Uh, how is FCPS planning to incorporate AI for, uh, instruction design? And, um, also, uh, preparing our students for that future?
Well, so I'm really excited to share that we're gonna be doing a presentation for the board on October seventh at our work session, uh, on AI. And really, an evening November third, I think we finally settled on, uh, that is, we're titling Meeting the Moment, right? Uh, we feel like we, um, are really needing to involve our community um, in shaping the direction that we wanna take with AI as we move forward. And also level-setting, so we have a community-wide understanding of what we're talking about when we're talking about AI. Because it's become, I think, such a common term that I sometimes feel like I have one, like, bubble over my head about what I think it is, but you might have a different bubble, but we're sort of talking like we're talking about the same thing. So I think the work session is going to be an opportunity to level-set uh, where we are as a school division. And then the community evening is an opportunity to bring our community to the table and talk about how we shape our future uh, for our twenty-second century skills. We also have a strong partnership with ISTI, the International Society for Technology and Education. Uh, Richard Colada is the CEO. They've partnered with ACSD, ASCD? A-C-S-D. And, uh, so we're very excited about that partnership. We kicked off the third cohort of our lighthouse schools, um, earlier this week. And you'll hear more about that partnership and what AI looks like, um, in that. But we're very excited about, uh, planning forward in that, uh, space.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunfer, go back.
I, I love the conversation about AI, although I've been somewhat skeptical about AI generally. But I wanted to just bring your attention to a new study that was published, um, on September sixteenth by Google. And the whole concept is Learn Your Way, is what they call it. And it's personalized learning. And it's actually the first usage of, um, generative AI. And I'll circulate the, uh, the PDF, uh, report, um, to you. But it's, um, not just theoretical. They actually put together personalized, um, content through their generative AI platform, Gemini. And then they went out and had it tested by independent experts, which I think is exciting because they could take a single textbook, which is, you know, locked in stone, once it's printed, right, once it's published. And they could, from that, um, through the AI, derive content for different grade levels based on that single point of contact and, um, also adapt it to different learning styles. So if you're an auditory learner, if you're a visual learner, if you're a kinesthetic learner, they could adapt it just through this generative AI. And I think that is so powerful because that, for me, represents the most transformational application of AI that, that I've seen outside of perhaps, uh, the medical and scientific fields. And I think, um, that really could, um, help us to ensure that every child is getting the individualized support they need with the support of this robust platform, obviously with the, um, oversight and assistance of a, of a in-person human teacher. Because that, those human social connections are what guide the learning process. But, um, I, I do hope that FCPS, being a leader in the AI, uh, in education field already, will, will actively look at this. Um, and since it already has a, a partnership to some degree with Google, uh, build on that and, and see if we can pilot it to some extent.
Yes, sir. I, I know we're taking a look at that as well as Conami Go. We've looked at that. Um, and those follow into the high-impact tutoring ideas uh, without sort of the human that is part of the, uh, process. But definitely opens up doors for us, for our multilingual students, as well as students who just need a personalized support plan.
And I think that's really all students these days. You know, I think everyone needs a little bit of extra help. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I do have a question for Ms. McCollum. She had to leave, but she did ask me to ask her question, which is, can you share the specific developments, I'm sorry, the specific improvements in the IEP process? And she'll just take your answer.
Sure. Thank you. Um, Dr. Presidio, do you wanna relay those, please? I know you've been working with Dr. Edmonds-Herd on that.
Yeah, so there's a number of things that we've been working on. The first thing is we've been working with our consultants, the internet, actually, they're international experts in the area of inclusion, to review all of our IEP documents and our entire IEP process, um, to make, uh, process improvements. So one of the first things that we did is update our IEP checklist to really clarify the things that we wanna make sure, uh, are discussed in every single IEP meeting. Um, and we've included some of the new work that the board has done, even, uh, recently, uh, with the cell phone accommodations for students with disabilities. That's included on the IEP checklist now. Um, we've worked to make sure that as part of that process, we're looking at, um, the, uh, the ability for parents and students on the front end, um, to really speak to students' strengths. Because oftentimes in the past, I think we, uh, jumped immediately to services that were needed without really fully exploring the strengths that students had and thinking about the types of accommodations and modifications that would, uh, enable them to be successful in the general ed, uh, setting. So we're working on that process. And, um, there's a lot more work that needs to be done. Um, but we're pretty excited to be partnering with the consultants. We have, again, looking at every single document, uh, that we use in the IEP process.
Thank you. Uh, now I'm gonna finish with the rest of my questions. Some things that I see that we're missing from this because of previous discussions. Um, just some focus on closing the, the achievement gaps, just kind of some of that data really lives in instructional services. Um, as well as any plans or progress on writing, which we know has been an issue. Um, and thirdly, just the reading performance of students who are in the sixth grade middle schools, because we know that their teacher prep was not the same, well, the structure was not the same. We've had some workarounds, but I'd like to see a comparison between like students, are we having similar performances? Um, as well as on the last page, I noticed all the field trips. Thank you for providing that. But what seems to be missing here is how are we taking advantage of TJ's Planetarium, which in years past has been open for schools to visit as, uh, on a field trip? And I don't think I've heard about that in quite a few years.
I would have to defer to Dr. Presidio about the use of TJ's Planetarium.
Yeah, so thank you for noticing the attachment on the field trips. We just included that to really highlight that's, uh, the division-sponsored, uh, field trips that we have. So obviously, I'm not gonna go through everything that's on that list, but starting in fourth grade with music performances, um, all the way through things, uh, that we do for, uh, students at the high school level. So those are division-sponsored, budgeted, uh, field trips that we provide for. We do have access to planetariums, including the TJ Planetarium for schools if they choose to take a field trip, um, to a planetarium. But that's not something that we do for all students at a particular grade level. And the chart is just the things that we do for all students at a particular grade level.
I'm not even sure that the awareness that this is an opportunity exists. Because from what I understand, the Planetarium at TJ, and at TJ rivals that of what's downtown. And, and so I, I'm not sure the awareness is there. Maybe we can be a little bit more communicative with the elementary principals that this is an opportunity that exists.
Sure.
Um, just very quickly, I wanted to speak about the pacing guides and the lesson planning. Um, I've received some concerns and complaints from teachers, even principals, that they're not as helpful as I think people who are developing them are wanting them to be. And they're inconsistent across the, um, across the subject areas. I wonder, how can we ensure that they are, that you are receiving that feedback, which is part of this executive limitation? And we're having perhaps the folks who are writing them going into the schools to see how they're being implemented and really hearing about the concerns?
No, I, I appreciate you sharing those suggestions. I think they're all good. We, we try to do a lot of, of that work. I mean, first I would just clarify, and we had some information in the EL nine report about the number of curriculum projects that we ran in the summer, uh, to update our planning and pacing guides. Um, but I think one of the important things to note is that we develop those with, uh, teachers from the schools during the summer. So those aren't things that are just done, um, at Willow Oaks or in Gatehouse. Those are things that, um, are supported and really done collaboratively with instructional staff in the schools. We do collect feedback on them. Um, they're never perfect. There's always room for improvement. One of the things that we're working to improve right now is on some of the resources. Trying to have more examples, um, of how to differentiate our resources. So as we're working, you know, again, on our inclusion work, it's really important that we have differentiated resources and we're not asking teachers to create those. Um, additionally, we're working to update, uh, some of our resources with videos that would actually show teachers how you would use a particular strategy or use a particular resource. So we're always open to more feedback. Um, those materials can always be improved. And we go through a constant review, uh, refresh cycle, um, every year.
Thank, I, was that my time? It was your time. Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Uh, Mr. Moon. Um, but I'm sure I was not asking for a go. Thank you. Okay. At this time, we're gonna go ahead and, and call for the vote, which, for the motion that's on the screen. All those in favor, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Fresh, and myself. That is unanimous. We are gonna take a quick break in just a second, but we're gonna do the policy review first. And then we're gonna flip over and take a ten-minute recess. So agenda item eight point zero one, policy review, instructional program EL nine. The next order of business is the policy review for executive limitation EL, or EL nine instructional program. Annually, the board will review each executive limitation at the time of the monitoring report is provided to determine if revisions are needed. Um, board members may offer amendments to executive limitations at any, at any regular meeting, provided they send the final language to the board and clerk at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting to, at which it's to be considered. At this time, no amendments have been submitted in advance of this meeting, but board members may provide comments on EL nine before we vote on maintaining their current language for the next year ahead. I call on Ms. Dixit for a motion.
I move that the school board maintains executive limitation nine instruction program as it currently detailed in the strategic governance manual.
Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. McDaniel. Ms. Dixit, would you like to speak to your motion?
No.
Mr. McDaniel, would you like to speak to your second? Okay. Seeing no other board members, then we're gonna go ahead and, um, vote for the motion that's on the screen. All those in favor, Mr. McDaniel, Ms. Marin, Mr. McElveen, Ms. St. John Cunningham, Ms. Lady, Ms. Dixit, Ms. Seismarheiser, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Moon, Dr. Anderson, Mr. Fresh, and myself. So that is unanimous. So we are going to take a quick ten-minute break and we will be right back. Okay. We're going to come back from recess. Agenda Item 9.01, Academic Matters. I call on Dr. Reed for Academic Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And this evening, Academic Matters, we're going to talk about future-ready students in Fairfax County public schools. And we're excited to highlight some of the innovative learning experiences our students engage in across elementary, middle, and high school to support academic and career planning. So this connects to Goal 5 and talks about our commitment about every student graduating ready to thrive in life after school. Tonight's presentation will showcase examples that highlight our equity commitment to center student voice in preparing our students for success after graduation. So as we think about what it means to be future-ready, we feel that our students need rich learning experiences, durable skills, and exposure to career-related learning that best match their unique interests and goals. And honestly, I think as many of our students are preparing for careers that don't yet exist, they don't even necessarily realize what their interests or goals might be. And I think many students have to have that experience to find out what they don't want to do, just as often as what they do want to do. So tonight, we'd like to showcase a few examples that are targeted towards Goal 5 of our plan. In FCPS, career exploration actually begins in elementary school. One of the ways our elementary schools focus on this is through opportunities for students to begin connecting personal interests and skills to classroom leadership roles. Some elementary students complete skill and interest inventories, explore job postings, write letters of interest, develop early resumes, and assemble portfolios that capture their experience. It's also an opportunity to see some of our Portrait of a Graduate skills in action. Another opportunity in middle school in particular is Fairfax County Public Schools has partnered with Junior Achievement. And our eighth-grade students attend Finance Park as a economic and financial literacy education program that's conducted through business partnerships, and it's an opportunity for all of our eighth graders to engage at this building. And honestly, I went, I've spent a day there with eighth graders. It's right near Frost Middle School, I believe. And really, it's experiential learning and where students actually find out that it costs a lot more to do some of the things that they thought perhaps cost less. So it's an opportunity to provide relevant, real-world, financially literate decision-making. And each middle school has a Finance Park lead teacher who coordinates these trips and ensure that our eighth graders take part in this simulation. At the high school level, there are numerous opportunities to explore future career interests. And additionally, our annual FCPS College Fair and Post-Secondary Night are coming up in the coming month here in October, and these are great opportunities for students and their families to learn more about post-secondary opportunities. Tonight, we'd like to highlight a unique learning opportunity called Instruction to Industry. So in partnership with local business and community partners, we host an annual Instruction to Industry I-to-I Future-Ready Conference, which connects our students with over 125 local employers in high-demand career fields such as business, healthcare, technology, and engineering. The event provides students with a chance to gain hands-on exposures to career pathways. And last year's event created 3,000 student-to-employer interactions with over 200 paid internships. The event will take place in March this year, where students will explore career presentations, networking mini-sessions, and mock interviews. Additionally, our FCPS offers unique and specialized programming for students with disabilities through our Career and Transition Services programming. Tonight, we'd like to highlight some of those opportunities that these services provide in partnership with local business and community and transition services. So there are a number of different types of events that are highlighted on this slide that occur over the course of the year, from October through April, and provide opportunities for our students to explore future career opportunities. Finally, Madam Clerk, let's go ahead and watch the video to see student learning experiences in action.
Our goal is simple. It's to prepare every student for a successful future. That's why we're so excited to offer rich learning opportunities that align with Goal 5 of our strategic plan, ensuring that every student graduates ready to thrive in life after high school. Through their K-12 experience, students across FCPS have targeted opportunities to explore future careers, build financial literacy, and develop Portrait of a Graduate skills. These experiences will help them transition successfully through graduation and into their adult life. At the elementary level, schools are doing simulations where students explore different classroom jobs, matching their personal experiences and skills with roles like line captain, technology support, or even cleanup crew.
Applying for jobs this year was different because we actually had like more of a choice for which job we picked. And it made us feel, it made us have a more real-world experience building resumes and applications, having to list down our skills and what we were good at, how we could work in a group. We also had more of a choice. There was a wide range of jobs to pick from, so that made it more hands-on and lifelike.
Finance Park is an experience that all eighth-grade students attend. Before they go, they spend three weeks learning about financial literacy, which includes savings, spending, and career options. If you visit a Finance Park, you're going to see a bunch of different businesses. Students go from storefront to storefront, where they're going to have to make some tough decisions. What choices are they making for their cars? What type of groceries are they purchasing? Are they going on vacation this year? Are they budgeting for that vacation? Finance Park is a great simulation for all our eighth graders to experience what it feels like to be an adult, making some real-life financial decisions.
Every year, FCPS and surrounding school divisions across Northern Virginia team up with Virginia Ed Strategies and the Inova Healthcare System to host Instruction to Industry, a future-ready conference. This is a regional event designed to connect students with local employers in high-demand career fields. Participating high schools send students on this field trip that provides hands-on exposure to career pathways, essential workforce skills, and meaningful industry connections. But this isn't your typical career fair. Instruction to Industry takes things to the next level with career cluster-themed rooms, dynamic networking workshops, and even rapid-fire mock interviews. And the impact? It's huge. Employers reported more than 3,000 student-to-employer interactions, over 700 planned follow-ups, and nearly 200 paid job and internship offers, all from just one event. And this year, it's bigger than ever. Over two full days in March, the conference will serve twice as many students as before. These opportunities, especially starting at a young age, will open students' eyes to the possibilities that they may have never known about, allow them to dream of a bright future, and give them the tools to thrive regardless of the path they take.
So, Madam Chair, that is Academic Matters for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. At this now, I'm going to invite board members to ask any clarifying questions or provide comments. We're going to kick it off with Ms. Dixit.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Amazing work being done in our division in terms of getting the students' future ready. I love, I loved Finance Park when I visited with my son many, many years ago. I just wish it was open to more students in other grades too. Like high school, I think after eighth grade, they don't go back to this at all, right? Maybe a refresher in 12th grade might be needed because then they're ready for, you know, real life after that. So they need to know how to manage money. I really liked the Instruction to Industry Future-Ready Conference, and I think it's going to double the size. That's great. Is it possible to do like more IT-specific conference or something like that? As we are into this industry right now, and we are like a As we are into this industry right now, and we are like a Silicon Valley of the East Coast in Northern Virginia, and so many big companies are here, innovative innovations are happening in AI and other divisions. So, I would like our students to get exposed to that also because there are a lot of students right now after college are not being able to get the jobs that this industry is looking for. There's a mismatch happening. And if our students know what this industry is looking for, and they can intern with them, maybe it'll help them to future, help them with their education post-secondary as well, and then maybe come back to work for these companies. So, I would love to, you know, you know, see if something like that happened with our, maybe with our IT department also supports that.
Yes, ma'am. It's a regional conference, so I, and you were correct. I know our Northern Virginia Tech Council, led by Jennifer Taylor, they're really working to make us a hub, right? In Northern Virginia, a technology hub. So, I will make sure we pass along that request that we increase the IT presence.
Thank you, Ms. Dixitt. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I heard about the IBCTE certification. I am not sure I have that term correctly. Can you speak to that a little bit?
I think you're talking, there is an IBCTE capstone certificate. And I, I'm not sure where we are on that here in Fairfax County, but Dr. Presidio likely will know as it's part of our instructional program.
Yeah, so, we do offer the IB Career-Related Learning Certificate. And students can earn that at all of the IB schools if they complete the coursework, and then there's additional assessment work and things that they need to do. But we do offer that. It is available.
And can you explain how that's a benefit to students?
Well, you know, I think, again, the focus of the presentation tonight, obviously, was, you know, some division-wide things that we're trying to do. But all of it is related to, as Dr. Reed already mentioned, kind of allowing students to explore interests that they may have for future, you know, post-secondary education or future careers. So, if a student, for example, in an IB Business class completes the Career-Related Learning Program, that might give them additional information and additional skills that would inform their selection of what they might want to study when they're in school. And I'm using that particular example because my son, who just graduated last year, participated in that, and he decided to major in business and finance when he went to college. But again, the point is to allow students to have that deeper dive and really understand how to apply the more theoretical learning that they're getting in school to what those career opportunities would look like in the real world.
Thank you. I thought that was an exciting development. Glad to hear that it is here.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Ms. Lady.
Sorry, I'm going to be quick. The I-Future, the conference that they referenced, what's it? I-to-I. I saw that the gentleman being interviewed had the CTE sign behind his head. So, I'm just asking, is that only the kids who are currently enrolled in a CTE course? And how long have we been doing this?
No, it's open to students regardless of whether or not they're enrolled in CTE courses, although most of our students are enrolled in CTE courses. I think 65,000 students who, you know, complete a CTE course every year, middle school to high school. So, most of our students are. But it's open to anybody. That's our work-based learning specialist that you saw, who's part of the Counseling and College and Career Readiness Office. So, he just happened to be filmed with the CTE banner behind him. But he supports work-based learning experiences for all students.
How long have we been doing this event?
It's a couple of years. I don't know exactly how many years, but I think we're in the third year, if I'm correct. So, I think this is the third year.
Okay, so perhaps it's since I left because I don't recollect.
No, it's relatively new. Yeah.
Okay, okay. That's great. I mean, it's fantastic, and I love the expansion of it. I just want to make sure it's open to all students because, you know, some, well, you're correct. A lot of our kids do take a CTE course. Not all of our kids do outside of Econ and Personal Finance, or perhaps AP Econ if they want the more rigorous version. But the opportunities for internships and things like that are pretty phenomenal for kids who are very much in a, you know, different track than a curricular track. So, that was my main question. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lady. I hope that we get invited to the I-to-I conference next year because we're, that would be exciting to see. So, Agenda Item 9.02, Opening of Schools Report. I call on Dr. Reed for the Opening of Schools Report.
Well, thank you, Madam Chair. I am thrilled to be able to provide our Opening of Schools Report and sharing a recap of our strong start to the 25-26 school year. For tonight's Opening of Schools Report, I'll be sharing who we are and how we provide a world-class education for each and every student in Fairfax County Public Schools, a look back at the success made possible through the efforts of our incredible community, and I look forward at what the new year is going to bring for our students, staff, and families. I could not be prouder of Team FCPS. We have an incredible community of students, staff, and families. And we have been working hard as we prepared for this year. I think you'll see the fruits of our labor here shortly and recognizing that as we work together in an aligned, coherent fashion, anything is possible. So, let's roll the first day-of-school video to start us off.
The wheels on the bus goes round and round, round and round, round and round. The wheels on the bus goes round and round, all through the town.
What grade are you guys? Second grade? Dr. Reed, I'm your superintendent.
Well, it's nice to meet you all, and we wanted to say welcome to the 25-26 school year and welcome to Kindersharden.
And so, Mr. Muick is over there high-fiving the wheels on the bus. But he sings at senior leader meetings as well. Nobody opens schools like Fairfax County Public Schools. It is one big celebration across the county. We recognize learning happens best in community, and the data that we have here, we're thrilled about. Fairfax County Public Schools, for the first time, is proud to have seven of the top 10 high schools in the Commonwealth be Fairfax County Public Schools, as well as the number-five school in the nation, according to U.S. News and World Report. We have 262 students from 19 different high schools that are among the semifinalists named by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation for 2026, which is a 40% increase in numbers over 2025. And our standard of learning results continue to show our division outperforming state averages. We've also increased the number of eighth graders, as you can see, enrolled in algebra over the last several years from 58 to 74.5%, and they are continuing to pass at similar rates even as we've increased our numbers. Next slide, let's talk a little bit about Ready for Real Life and our seniors. For the class of 2025, we've identified that 81% of our students enrolled in a college-equivalent course. Over 16,000 earned industry credentials. 5,400 successfully completed a career and technical education course. And our students earned more than $168 million in scholarships. As we think about enrollment, we remain the ninth-largest school division in the United States with 199 schools and centers. By public school enrollment, we continue to be larger than 11 states in the District of Columbia. Our learners are incredibly diverse, and we're proud that 85% of our funding goes directly to instruction and support student learning. Our students speak more than 194 languages, and more than 1 in 3 are eligible for free reduced lunch and meals. More than 1 in 5 are multilingual learners. More than 1 in 6 receive special education services. And 7%, or just about 13,000, are military-connected. As we think about our staff, for the first time in many years, we started the school year with 99.7% of our positions filled on day one. It's the lowest in three years. We have a total of 41,298 employees, including part-time and hourly, making us one of the largest employers in Virginia. We started the year with 141 ambassador teachers from around the world who are doing incredible work. And this is a program where there are over 700 ambassador teachers coming to the United States with just over 20,000 of these ambassador teachers applying for 700 positions. I'm grateful for the efforts of our dedicated and innovative educators and all of our staff who support our work in all kinds of roles across the school division. It's one team, one mission, and it's showing great results for our children in this community. We know that FCPS works with many types of businesses that remain valuable assets to our students and the young people in Fairfax County. These partnerships take many forms and meet the needs of our schools, which help drive our strategic plan. They provide key foundational donations, mentors, tutors, speakers, after-school programs, student clinical experiences, mentoring, needs-based donations, workforce development, arts, get-to-green. All of our work is honestly the result of tremendous partnerships and our strong community support, which has sustained the traditions of excellence here in Fairfax County. As we think about engaging our community, engagement that's intentional is fundamental to our mission. As you can see, we've got an exciting schedule this year again, including 20 family vision group meetings. We had a great start kickoff meeting at our event earlier this month. We're also moving forward with community and employee conversations, which take place throughout the fall, winter, and spring. We've already had several of these meetings and honestly, continue to hear valuable feedback that guides our mission-driven work. I want to thank everyone who comes out to share their thoughts, voices, and feedback, and we're looking forward to continuing this work in the coming year. When we think about food and nutrition services, the new menu items that are being rolled out are really exciting. We've had 22 new lunch recipes and six new breakfast recipes. And I don't know about you, but I remember being at a dinner some time ago that, let me think, the frugal gourmet, I'm trying to remember what his real name was. But he was the guest speaker, and he said, you know, "Most American households have 15 to 20 cookbooks and make the same 10 recipes all year long." So, it's exciting to see that we're going to have 22 new lunch and six new breakfast recipes. Lots of opportunity for student feedback and engagement, and a focus on sustainability and scratch cooking. We know processed food is not best for our young people. And let's think about those buses and all of our drivers, mechanics, routers, dispatchers, just an incredible team and team transportation. It was thrilling to say that 96% of our bus routes were on time on the first day of school, which is incredible, as one of the largest school bus fleets in the entire country to have that kind of on-time rate on the very first day of school. So, we continue to see a drop in our vacancies. A 48% drop year-over-year is an incredible drop in our vacancies. And as you can imagine, the logistics involved in managing a fleet as large as Greyhound with 6,987 routes, driving 93,731 miles every day. Our team does incredible work. We're also, this year, excited to pilot a new safety and routing system on our school buses. The new tablet-based technology includes real-time navigation, the radio frequency identification check-in for students, which you're going to hear more about, and live bus tracking for families, all designed to make the ride safer and more efficient. So, we're thrilled about our work in transportation. And let's take a look at some of our building data. We have 28 million square feet of buildings with 188 Energy Star-certified buildings currently, with $100 million-plus worth of energy saved division-wide over the last 12 years. As we think about digital resources, we continue to improve our student device experience. We've purchased 28,000 new laptops, which, by the way, we did purchase fewer than we had intended based on budget circumstances last year because we extended 50,000 current laptops and just upgraded them to extend their useful life, so we didn't purchase those. We replaced 470 projectors, as you can see on the slide. And we've seen a tremendous uptick in our digital tool engagement with almost a 30% increase in parent digital consent, with a 90% increase in the use of digital registration tools. We continue to see the value. Our families get engaging digitally with our division. And we're thrilled that we are, for the first time, having an online calendar that is going to include events from all schools, programs, and the like, which is going to be a tremendous asset to our families. And there'll be a whole nother presentation just on that to the board. As well as, for the first time, we're going to be developing a mobile app, which actually is developed and is available in the App Store for either Android or Apple phones. And this app will be able to put the power of news feed into every family's phone, mobile phone, because we find that more and more of our families are on the move and can monitor calendar, parent view, and news feeds with emergency notices through the app. So, we'll be putting out information about that very shortly with a video as we complete our beta feedback period. Our capital improvement program, just want to clarify those programs that were completed this summer. We provide during the first week of school, this is another data point that's not on the slide, but during the first week of school, the Office of Facilities Management received 3,042 work order requests. And within the first two weeks, the team successfully fulfilled and completed 1,537 of these and are continuing to complete those tickets. We, capital projects, added modern amenities, enhanced safety, removed modulars, and did renovations, created new classrooms, offices, libraries, cafeterias, and parking. You can see the summer infrastructure work completed is an enormous number of projects and, again, are completed and schools under construction are listed. We've already mentioned our new safety tools, technologies, and menu items. So, what else could possibly be new? Well, you can read on the slide that there are a number of initiatives that are new or a continuation this year with perhaps a different focus. And we continue to work hard to take our game up in every way possible. We know that Fairfax County Public Schools drive the engine of our economy. Strong schools support strong businesses, which support strong families and residents and community. And we need to recognize that our work here in FCPS doesn't just impact our students, it impacts our staff, our families, and everybody across our community. So, when our schools thrive, our communities thrive. And we appreciate the community support and partnership in that. So, welcome back, Fairfax County Public Schools, and happy to take any questions. But this presentation is posted for those who want to revisit it and re-watch the video over and over and over again. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. At this time, we're going to go to Dr. Anderson to kick us off.
So many parts of this were exciting to hear. I'll just start with some of the good news things that I saw. The teacher vacancies, that's always been a high concern. And it is very exciting, and not to mention comforting to parents, to know that their students, their children, are studying the school year with a teacher and not with a long-term sub. So, I do want to share kudos on that. And I would be remiss if I didn't extend kudos to Mr. Muick on the driver vacancy reductions. And I would be remiss if I didn't extend kudos to Mr. Muick on the driver vacancy reductions. I just want to know, how did you do it? Because from what I understand, this year, we don't have any double-back buses.
So I'm going to have Mr. Muick and Mr. Solomon answer because the two of them are a powerful team to solve this issue. Mr. Muick, we'll start with you and then float to Mr. Solomon.
Yes, ma'am. Thanks, Dr. Anderson. It was definitely teamwork between transportation and HR, and the big thing was putting everything in one location, so we have all our normal hiring conferences that the transportation team does at Lorton, at Stonecroft, but once a quarter, they have one here at Gatehouse. And Williams' team shows up with fingerprinting. We've worked to get Inova to show up to do physicals, bloodwork, so you know, once you get the driver candidate here, we can do everything, help them with their resume, do the interview, get the bloodwork, you know, the more you get done before they leave, the better a chance you have of capturing them. So it was great teamwork between the two of us to do that, or our teams really. We just, we were smart enough to get out of their way and let them work.
That's very convenient because you also prevent all the delays for them coming back to do all of those things. Great strategy, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. You're welcome.
And Mr. Muick took the words right out of my mouth, making it a one-stop shop so that our candidates can complete everything from fingerprinting to drug testing to making sure that we're doing their physicals, to helping them with their application, to coming and doing their interviews, all in a one-stop-shop fashion versus having to send them from location to location to location. And for what it's worth, hiring a bus driver requires additional steps that other positions don't require, so doing it all in a one-stop-shop fashion while they're with you increases the likelihood that they're hired exponentially.
That is fantastic. Thank you to both of you. I do have a follow-up question for you, Mr. Solomon. I know that we're highly staffed, so that's great, but in terms of the substitute, are we having a shortened period for, from application to actual approval?
At the beginning of the year, that's when we see our peak hiring volume for substitutes, and we are seeing it take on average, or we're seeing it take on average about four weeks. As of, in a normal situation, it takes about two weeks.
Wonderful, thank you. And I also noticed here, Dr. Reed, that our ambassador teachers came up to 141. I think we had 125, 26 last year. It's okay. My wondering is with what's happening in the federal government regarding visas, do we have impact to this program based on that?
Mr. Solomon?
At this time, there is no impact to the J-1 program. You may recall that there was a temporary pause or challenge with J-1 candidates getting appointments with the Department of State to complete their visa processing back in May. However, at this time, we have no indication that there is an impact to the J-1 program.
Wonderful, thank you. So glad to hear that. One of the other things that you highlighted here, I can't find which slide, but it speaks to the consent form. As a parent who has to do this for multiple children across so many layers, thank you because this was the easiest year where I was able to just, it was in one place and I just kept on going sheet after sheet after sheet, and I, yes, no, yes, no, or toggle to do it all. It is so much easier. I cannot stress how much easier that form has or that platform has become, and I'm sure some of the other parents had the same experience. Huge improvement, so for that, I'm very, 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 very grateful. My last question is regarding enrollment. We are about 4,000 off from the end of last year. We anticipating growth, and where are we seeing this, or is it scattered across the grade levels? Could you speak to that, please?
Yes, ma'am. We generally grow from the beginning of the year through till the October, end of October, but we are slightly obviously lower enrolled this fall than we had predicted, but again, we're continuing to grow, perhaps not as quickly as other years. And we do have some students for whom they're a bit reluctant to be in school at this time that we're working on creating some online options for them at this time.
Oh, thank you. Do they still count as FCPS students?
They will be once we enroll them.
Oh, I see. Alrighty, thank you. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Moon?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thanks for the presentation. I remember the first day of school, getting up at 4:00 in the morning to go to a front church by 5:30. It was very early in the morning to celebrate. With the slightly less, lower enrollment, I know it's going to grow, but as of this point, does that bring us some savings?
At this point, probably in incidentals, but we're going to have to, we're going to be monitoring that to see what the trend line shows and keep you updated on that.
Okay. I guess with a lower enrollment, perhaps we get the less state funding.
There is a bit less of that, that's right, yes, sir.
Upsetting. Okay, with that, I wasn't looking at that math data. Eighth graders enrolled in Edinburgh one were higher, which showed a tremendous jump from 2020, 2022 to 2023, you know, to 25, 26 school year, 58.4% to 74.5%. That's a remarkable 16% jump. Below that slide at the bottom, I would see for fifth graders, I think you wanted to include the fifth graders information, taking advanced math, going up by 10.6%. I would expect if you want to grow high school students, what eighth graders take higher math, then it's got to start from early, early grades. So looking at, you know, elementary school data is perhaps the right thing to do, maybe the fifth grade. Why is that only 10.6% when eighth graders have shown higher increase in taking higher math?
Well, so the 10.6% in fifth grade year-over-year is just year-over-year growth in numbers of fifth graders. If I'm reading it correctly, it's hard to see.
He says since 2023, so it was, it's not year-over-year.
Yeah, it's, oh, there, I can read it on that. Right, 10.6% increase. So it is not as large an increase, and I think we're going to see larger increases once we have a math basal curriculum. But we do have a significant number of sixth graders now in algebra, which we've not previously had, and it didn't make it into this report, but I think Ms. Lemon has that data for us. So Ms. Lemon, can you share, and we probably need to add it to the online slide?
We have 741 students this year in algebra, one in sixth grade.
An increase?
And it's an increase. Last year, I believe it was 30. So from 30 to 741. And I want to say 33 are participating in our virtual class, and 33 schools, and 20 schools are participating in person as part of our pilot.
On board of visual learning and auditory, so if you could put that into writing so that I could go back later?
Yes, we'll get something for you, for sure.
And that pilot's expect to expand, so over the next two years, we expect to see algebra offered in every elementary school, all 141 for our students.
I'm excited to see 99% of our positions in being filled at the beginning of the year, but however, did our position reduction have something to that?
Most certainly. Right, we had fewer positions to fill. That's correct.
Okay, that's, that's a sad part of the fact of seeing 99.7%.
It is.
But at the same time, 99.7 is much better than what I used to see, though.
Yes, sir.
But thank you. Thank you. Thank you, that's what I have.
Mr. McLeary?
Well, thank you, Dr. Reed. This is a very helpful presentation, and I do want to say how much I value being able to visit schools with you, so I really appreciate it on the first two days, being able to go around.
That's great.
It'd be nice if we could do that more throughout the year and have those opportunities. The, there's the slide on community engagement is also a very impressive slide. I would argue it may be too impressive. I think we have, we may have taken things too far when it comes to community meetings on various topics. I think we need to think critically about topics we're engaging community on, so there's just not a, people don't get tired of hearing from us. There is value in doing targeted engagements that engage people on critical topics at critical times. I think the boundary meetings that are taking place right now are an example of where we may have taken things too far, so that's just something for, to take back and consider. On the slide about our transportation work, I saw there are listed 31 electric buses. You know, my recollection last year is that with the grants we had received, that would have brought the number to something around 85 or thereabouts. So is 31, is that what we're stuck with now, given that we've had to?
We're actually at 48 because we received, I believe, 17 before the uncertainty with the federal grants around EV buses, so I believe we're up to 48. And had the certainty been there for funding for the remaining, we would be up to what, Mr. Muick?
It would have, it would have gotten us up to about 108. There was about another 60 that got snagged with the grant problems.
Yeah, we were on a, we had a good tailwind going, but we're, I believe, at this point, plateaued at 48.
Got it, okay. That's very helpful. On the food issues, so one of the things that's come to my attention, as well as several other board members, is that we've seen an increase of energy drink usage among students, particularly middle and high school, and that's concerning. About a decade ago, we made a very concerted effort to remove all soda products from our schools, to get rid of our sugary drinks and other things, and I think that was a great stance. Obviously, kids aren't procuring energy drinks at school, but they're bringing them in. So I think that's a community conversation we need to have, but it can be very harmful to student health. And I know our principals are addressing that on the front lines, but if there's, we can think critically about how we can address that more broadly as a district. And then I think finally, just speaking broadly about beginning of school and the school year, I think it's no surprise to anyone in this room that it felt like there wasn't any summer this past summer, and we've become much more, our summer has been really constricted. This year, we're going into the middle of June, so I do think there's value in bringing back some form of the calendar committee, or at least having that conversation as a board. Welcome thoughts on that.
I think that's probably a board conversation that we need to have, if that's something that you all want to take a look at, but I would agree, the summer flies at this point, for sure.
Ms. Ismer Heiser?
Thank you, and thank you for this presentation. I think there's some really amazing successes in here. Kudos to your transportation team for 98% on time, or it was, I mean, that's amazing. I remember the lore, when I was a parent for many years staying at that bus stop, it was like, oh, it's first day, it'll take a week or two before anyone's on time. That was, that was the statement at the bus stops, and so to see 98% on time the first day is amazing. I do like to point out on Slide 11, the $100 million saved in the last 10 years from the Energy Star buildings. I think it's more, I think it's really valuable to lift up, that when we are doing programs that are helping our climate, it also helps us save money, and that's an important fact to lift up. I do want to mention, Dr. Reed, just for the community to know, on Slide 8, when, I think it's Slide 8, when you talk about the community meetings, and it's okay, you're flipping, I'll let you know I have a question, don't worry, but I just wanted to commend you for that. We heard when we started on the board from a lot of families, that there wasn't enough family engagement, there wasn't a family inclusion, there wasn't a chance to talk to families, and you did it the first year, and I thought, okay, well, this is your first little listening tour, and that's going to be it. And you've continued to do it every single year, and that is commendable because I see, when I go to schools and back-to-school nights and other events, I see families talking about how engaged they feel with their schools, and that's also kudos to the hard work of our building principals and their admins and teachers, but you can see a different level of feeling engaged. Even if they're frustrated, they at least feel like they're engaged with, so kudos to that. I wanted to ask a little bit about the enrollment decrease. You know, maybe, it's probably too early to have a sense of what's causing that. I know there was some conversation about just the kindergarten birth cliff, right, that came through, but do you think the current policies on immigration or what's happened with the federal workers and people moving out of this area could have had an impact? That's a pretty big decrease from last year to this year, and I think it's a decrease from what we expected as well, so I'm curious if you guys have any data or didn't need to figure out what's going on.
We have some data, and I'll be providing some reporting on that in the coming weeks. We also traditionally start lower and continue to build over the first few months of school. So, but I do think clearly some of the immigration policies have impacted families and choices, so.
I would just, are you aware of any students who are choosing not, or their families are choosing not to send them to school for fear? Because that is what, one of my worries is that we have, are we seeing a greater rise in chronic absenteeism? Again, maybe too early to tell, but I worry about students missing out on education because of fear.
Right, so we're in our sixth week of school, so it's hard to establish absenteeism rates this quickly.
Yeah, it is.
But I can get back to you on the other topic.
I think just something to watch, right? Because if we do, if that's the fear, how can we engage our families to make them try to feel safe in this environment to send their kids to school? And then the last thing I would just say as a, an area perhaps to work on a little bit, on, we talked about Page 7 about partnerships, and you and I have had many conversations about the number of organizations and businesses in the community that are very eager to partner with our schools, and I think that's an area for growth. So I would love to see more information about these partnerships that you list, maybe in a Friday letter, and then areas, plans for growth in that area.
Yes, ma'am.
Especially if I just finish my sentence, in areas of tightening budgets, I think those partnerships become even more important. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Ismer Heiser. Mr. Dunn?
I appreciate the discussion about declining enrollment. I think it's concerning. I think there was a great article recently in the Heckenberger Report online that this is a trend nationwide, and maybe immigration has something to do with it, but it's also just families are having fewer kids. And I went to an education conference this summer and learned from some colleagues in California and elsewhere that, you know, there is just a dire situation in some school divisions, which maybe you saw in your previous school divisions where you, where you were a leader, that, and they are going to such an extent that they're hiring marketing firms that specialize in bringing in more students. And I think we don't want to get to that point. So I know, I mean, this is a wonderful presentation, the videos are amazing, but I think there's still a long way that FCPS has to go in its marketing and communications. There's just not sufficient public awareness of the incredible data that is in this report. I would love to get a sense of how this data compares to our peer school divisions and how it compares to private schools within Fairfax County, because I bet if you rack and stack, we're head and shoulders above our private school competitors, and that's data that we need to publish, that we need to put out there, because there are a number of families in our county who have chosen to homeschool or to private school based on their belief that their kids will get a better education. But I'll bet you dollars to donuts that any public school in our county will give a kid a better education than homeschooling or private school regardless of the school or how qualified the parents are who are teaching. And that story needs to be told because, you know, ultimately, we're in the same business as, as, you know, any consumer retail establishment. We need customers to come in the door because if they don't, that undermines the foundation of credibility that we, when we go to the county for, you know, further contributions to fully fund our budget. And so I just ask more efforts be made to tell that story to the public, not just to us, you do a great job of telling us, but to tell the public and figure out ways to do that. I love the state of the schools and other things you do, but sometimes I feel we only talk to, you know, PTA members and those who are already in the know. We need to get outside that bubble to reach the people who are retirees and might be encouraging their sons, their daughters, their relatives to either move here or not move here. And I know housing affordability is definitely an issue. And I know housing affordability is definitely an issue, but, but those decisions can be influenced by word of mouth.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn. Ms. Dixit.
I just lost my chain of thoughts. So I wanted to just say, first of all, Dr. Reed, that, um, FCPS, of course, is, is a trendsetter, um, school system in the country, and we are continually improvising, improving the scores and everything else. Just like the Algebra I benchmark we have, I wanted to know, and this can, may not be linked to our strategic goal, but how about science, and mainly computer science? Are we tracking that also as a, like, more number of students enrolling in them, or we are encouraging them to do, because that's where I see the future is?
Yes, ma'am. I, I know this afternoon, I just reviewed a survey that's going out to students about computer science. And I also, you know, I think our conversation on October 7th at the work session, we're going to talk a little about, uh, how we're programming our CTE courses across the division, how we're doing a refresh, or planning a refresh for our academy courses, in conjunction with the conversation around the new Western High School, in conjunction with just making sure we have global work, um, and knowledge priorities in place across the school division. So I think there's, that's a topic that there's more to come on. And of course, for much of the data science, machine learning, quantum, AI, a lot of it relies on mathematics, so, and the ability to build logic and prompt writing, you know, around literacy. So we think that as long as we make sure we make good on those building block, uh, core academic areas, it will also improve the possibilities for computer science, uh, in the future.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. I, um, I, again, I think I'm too tired today.
Dr. Anderson, did you need to go back?
Yes, just very quickly, I, I really wanted to just comment on, uh, Mr. McElveen's comments regarding the calendar. I have been receiving a lot of feedback from, um, parents about the calendar, and again, because of just the lack of summer. And I'm not sure what you're hearing from the teacher associations, but I'm wondering, is there a space for us to make that one of your community conversations, or a survey, so that we can get more robust feedback? Because I'd like to get a sense of, is the feedback that I'm receiving in a vacuum? Because it's, it's been more than I've received, I, I think, in, you know, the last few years. And I know we had routinely before had a parent feedback component to the calendar process.
So I think right now, we have a perpetual calendar that's always three years out. One of the serious concerns that I was faced with when I first came to the division in the summer of 2022 is we didn't have a calendar for that fall, because we hadn't, uh, come to agreement on that. And we don't ever want to be in a situation where we can't have calendars at least a couple of years out for people, for planning, um, for travel, for families, for our military families that are moving in and out and having that information. So I think before we want to start surveying, um, you're asking my opinion, so my recommendation is before we start doing the surveying, that the board decide whether you want to step back from a perpetual calendar that enables us to have a three-year-out planning cycle, because gathering information, I think, once you make that first decision, then you would want to gather information about how you might want to amend it. But right now, we're, we have the three-year-out calendars, and that, I think, is a topic you'd want to decide first.
Sure, I think there's some, some opportunity here for conversation, because I don't think these two activities are mutually exclusive, because if, because, because parents have loved the three-year calendar, because they're able to plan all of the things that you've just said. But there has to be some space for us to get some feedback within that process. So I, I don't think we stop the outlook without having, I, I, I don't think that we can, um, remove feedback about the calendar to still keep a calendar in front of them. There's some space to do that, and I'd just like to figure out what that could be. Perhaps it's knowing we have the next two calendars coming, and we are providing, we're getting feedback now for the fourth year. But something has to, to change, because the emails are continuously, they're being more dissatisfied. And I, I think there's a space for us to also hear the community voice on this, and I hope you can figure that out with your team.
Well, actually, I'll wait for the direction of the board before I direct the team on that, because that's currently something that's, it's set, so I want to make sure that I am, uh, following the direction of the board.
Sure, so I will raise that for the board's consideration, then.
Absolutely, Dr. Anderson, thank you. Um, okay, thank you, Dr. Reed.
You bet. Thank you.
Agenda item 10, Consent Agenda. Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda, listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion. Many items listed here have gone through board review, and documentation has been provided to all board members and the public in advance. Items may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of a board, any board member prior to the meeting. The consent agenda items are on the screen. Is there any objection to approving the consent agenda? Hearing and seeing no objection, the consent agenda is approved. Agenda item 11, New Business. The following areas are new business agenda items. There will not be a vote on these items this evening, but the action is scheduled at a future meeting. Agenda item 12, Board Committee Reports. I call on Mr. McElveen for a report of the Audit Committee.
Thank you so much. So the Audit Committee had our inaugural meeting for the year last Monday, uh, and we're pleased to welcome Mr. McDaniel to the committee, uh, this year, while, uh, the rest of us are old timers. During the meeting, General Coe provided a overview of our audit plan for the year, um, and we had a 30-minute technical meltdown, which was a highlight. So, um, that was the extent of that first meeting. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McElveen. Agenda item 13, Superintendent Matters. I call on Dr. Reed for Superintendent Matters.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and welcome to the first full week of fall. It's pretty exciting that, uh, I can't even believe we're already in fall, to be honest, the first full week, but here we are. We have our fall sports season in full swing, including the launch of Girls' Flag Football, with our Media Day on Monday at Westfield High School and Tuesday at Annandale High School. And I understand the Washington Commanders will be present for our uniform reveal. So we're very excited, there's a lot of interest across the school division, and I can't wait to see some of our first games. I also had an opportunity to visit Glasgow Middle School and visit with some of our middle school students to create a video that'll be coming out to the community regarding the implementation of our middle school weapons detection software. And I want to thank Owen, Deanie, Jared, Alex Willow, and Isla, who spoke candidly about, uh, why safety matters. So very excited about that. Had a chance to visit a number of schools in the last couple of weeks, in particular Longfellow Middle School with new Principal Chris Butzer. Had a chance to visit PE class as well, and learned how to shoot an arrow. Archery can actually be a lot of fun. Attended a number of back-to-school nights, employee conversations, our first community conversations, um, and got my first library card in Fairfax County. So had a chance to be part of, uh, the Get a Library Card, Fairfax Library Foundation's National Library Card Sign-Up Month is this month, so if you haven't, get out and get a library card. There's a lot of exciting, uh, a lot of exciting selections, so, uh, great opportunity to meet with folks. Also attended, as I'm on the board of the Northern Virginia Technology Council, we had an opportunity, Gotham Sethi and I, uh, to attend a meeting and hear from Dimitri Alpov, Alpovritch, um, who happened to co-found, uh, the cybersecurity, uh, firm CrowdStrike, and learned a lot about, um, cyber trends and how technology around our region is growing, to Ms. Dixit's point. It's really a hub here. And enjoyed our Educate Fairfax Fourth Annual Alumni Hall of Fame, where we inducted a number of alumni, and I continue to be so proud to be part of a community that has the amazing, um, graduates and the folks who do such incredible things. So special thanks to our community and all our staff. And, um, finally, just lastly, I did attend the Nattaway Powell, Rick Kelly is one of our chiefs, and he's in our IT department. Um, and then the 17th Annual Asha Jothi 5K Fund Run, um, and the foundation shared $75,000 to a number of our schools this year, so a big thank you to them and everybody who turned out to that. So thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Reed. Agenda item 14, Board Matters. Next on the agenda is Board Matters. I will call on each board member to speak. We're going to kick it off with Mr. Frisch.
Thank you, um, and for tolerating my head cold and illness. I really regret not being able to join everybody there tonight. I understand we had more politicians from Richmond in our parking lot, so that's always welcome. Uh, I'm sure they'll keep coming back after November. In any case, um, it's been a busy couple of weeks. We had a fantastic time at Oakton's Homecoming Game, um, for our very first, a night at the game in Providence, where we're encouraging people to come out, uh, and cheer on our football teams, cheerleaders, flags, marching band, et cetera, uh, so the community can see our, our very talented students in action. Um, and the Cougars happened to defeat the Cavaliers, um, for their homecoming game. So that was exciting to be there with Dr. Reed and Principal Lane as well. Uh, the very next day, I was at Miller Heights Neighborhood Bash, which is always a fun event, uh, in the Oakton area, uh, talking with members of the community. And then this past weekend, excuse me, I co-hosted the Second Annual Providence Day Back-to-School Celebration with Supervisor Palczek, um, and was grateful to have Chairman McKay, Delegate Marcus Simon, Dr. Reed there. Uh, the Marshall Statesman Cheer Team was fantastic. We had the Vienna Singing Princes. If you've not seen them, they're amazing, and they're from all kinds of different FCPS schools, uh, lots of other great entertainment and, uh, activities as well. Uh, this past Sunday, I joined Mothers Out Front, standing in for Ms. Marin, um, at Louise Archer, uh, with Dr. Reed and 100 Mill Supervisor Walter Alcorn, uh, and Delegate Holly Sebold, as we, uh, celebrated Sunday, which is a new national day of action to celebrate all things solar and renewable energy. We talked about our new solar, uh, panels going in at 25 more schools, bringing us to 35, uh, and the new electric buses that are on their way as well. And then finally, uh, presuming I'm better, um, uh, I will be attending McLean's football game tomorrow night, um, against the Yorktown Patriots, uh, as our second stop on this night at the game, where we're encouraging Providence's families to come out and support their local high schools. And then the following Friday, October 3rd, is Marshall's homecoming game, and we will be doing the same there as well, also against the Yorktown Patriots. I'm afraid they're going to think I have it in for them. I don't know if the buzzer has gone or not.
You had, I think you had like 13 seconds left.
All right, well, uh, lots to be proud of in Providence District, from National Merit semifinalists to green flag schools, uh, just very grateful, um, for a wonderful start to this school year, and appreciate everything that staff has done, uh, and the hard work of my colleagues to help get it off without a hitch.
Thank you, Mr. Frisch. We hope you feel better. Mr. Dunn.
Well, I've had, uh, the opportunity and pleasure to attend many back-to-school nights at Bellevue, Bucknell, uh, other elementary schools, uh, and recently, I saw, uh, a great presentation about Avid in elementary schools at Gunston Elementary. All of this is very exciting, and there's just such great enthusiasm among parents and students at all the schools I've visited. And so I wanted to say, uh, thank you to all the parents who are the first educators of their children, who continue to guide the education of their, uh, children throughout their educational journeys, and who serve as indispensable partners, uh, to Fairfax County Public Schools, uh, to teachers, to school administrators, and ensuring that their students receive a world-class education and achieve optimal student outcomes. Thank you.
Ms. Seismarheiser.
Thank you, and, um, just exciting fall. I can almost smell, smell the pumpkin everything in the air, so if you guys can smell the pumpkin everything, let me know, because that fall is my favorite season, um, the football games, the homecoming parades, and Halloween, and all of the things, I'm very excited. And speaking of Halloween, don't forget, on October 4th, the Kings Park Library has a costume exchange. So if you have a little one who wants to turn in their costume and get a new one, come check it out. In addition to that, just a reminder to the folks out there, I'm sending another newsletter, but in my newsletter this week, the Student Leadership Program is, I'm seeking applications for a student leadership to represent the Braddock District, so please get your, your students to apply. I'm really excited, we had a great inaugural program last year. I want to thank the Canterbury Woods community for having me at their, uh, meet, PTA meeting last night to talk about some of their concerns around the budget, um, impacts to their schools and the importance of esteemed teachers. And so I'll be talking to you more, Dr. Reed, about that tomorrow during our check-in. And I'm very excited to announce that Wakefield Forest had a very exciting renovation celebration, um, where they actually had a sock hop theme, because their school was founded in 1955, which was super exciting. And Bonnie Brae's renovation is close to finishing. So congratulations to all the National Merit Scholar semifinalists from the Braddock District and the 12 Braddock Green Flag Schools for your eco-friendly programs and your get-to-green programs. And I look forward to seeing you at a football game very soon, or a volleyball game, and hopefully a flag football game as well, very, very soon. So with that, happy fall, everybody, and have a great night.
Thank you. Ms. Dixit.
Happy fall, everyone. Have a good night.
Ms. St. John Cunningham.
Uh, buenas noches, everyone. Uh, I was happy to attend the community conversations at Woodlawn Elementary with Dr. Reed and engage with parents and see some old colleagues there. Uh, also, I had fun attending the Running the Field at Edison High School, where all the Pyramid Schools come and all the Future Eagles get their little shirts that say I'm a Future Eagle, and then they get to run the field. And it was so exciting to see all the parents, all the kids, and see them all at the stands cheering for the football game. I also had the opportunity to go to Lewis High School to see the initial presentation of the Lewis Leadership Team Students' Projects. Uh, they were so thoughtful, they were so, um, amazing. I can't wait to see them when they come to the end. Finally, I would just like to talk to, uh, our proclamations tonight. We are so lucky to have an organization in our community that helps support our students and supports them in a manner that they get the things that they need, but their families and the students are supported in a matter that retains their dignity. And I want to reiterate the importance of literacy. One of the reasons that I'm so proud to be on this board is we are doing the critical When Nash, when Literacy Day was established, it was because of the importance of it, it is a human right, a human right to be able to read. We teach that here, we provide that, and it's not just reading, it's showing our kids how to learn and have critical thinking skills. That is the foundation of all of our academic endeavors, for our children to learn how to read and to be literate. So I encourage everyone at home and our children to read as much as they can. I also encourage them to get a library card from their local library, because the library doesn't only loan out books, they loan out a lot of other items, and they have amazing programming for our kids. So, um, with that, I'll say goodnight, and please make sure you all read.
Thank you, Ms. St. John Cunningham. Mr. McElveen.
I want to begin by reflecting briefly on the Alumni Hall of Fame event, uh, that Dr. Reed mentioned, and that, um, my at-large colleagues and Dr. Anderson and I attended last Wednesday. I, I truly believe that's one of the, if not the, most powerful event, um, that, that our county hosts every year, because we get to see how our graduates go off and, and change the world. And for those who were there, they'll recognize, um, uh, the power that we're in, Mr. Jim Acosta's remarks. As you know, he is one of our alumni of, um, uh, Annandale High School, um, but he talked about the immigrant experience and, and the values of this country, and just really touched me greatly. Um, so thank you to Jim and our other, um, 10 inductees into the Hall of Fame. Uh, I also had the privilege of going to the VSBA Legislative Conference, um, this past, uh, Friday in Richmond with Dr. Anderson, Ms. Anderson, um, and Ms. Marin. I really valued the opportunity to engage in fellowship with my colleagues and folks from around the state. I will say the conference itself and the lunch situation were subpar, um, so we'll need to work on that in the future. Um, and then finally, earlier this week, I was in New York for Climate Week, um, and one of the most interesting ideas I heard come out of that was that some districts are using the waste heat from data centers to heat their schools. So that is something, unfortunately, we're going to, we may consider, uh, in the future. Thanks. Thanks.
So I believe last night I went to my final back-to-school night of the season. That was Dogwood Elementary School, which did not disappoint. They had a wonderful setup for the specials, teachers, and they provided childcare in the cafeteria, so dinner was on while the parents and families got to visit the classrooms. I, I then went over to South Lakes High School for the community boundary meeting that was there, and this was that general sort of update. And, you know, I remain available for input and articulating the decisions that, you know, I will need to make about boundaries. And so, you know, headed on Monday to the superintendent's conversation, and then meeting with concerned families connected to Flores Elementary, in particular about the designation of Western High School for programming. Headed to Madison tomorrow for homecoming, and then, because I just can't get enough of marching bands, I'm going to the Marching Band Festival at Herndon High School on Saturday. I invite you to join me, it's going to be fabulous, I hope it doesn't rain. And then I'm really stoked for the first committee meeting that's been scheduled for the Joint Facility Review Committee with the Board of Supervisors. That's the kind of stuff that makes me very excited. So have a great weekend.
Thank you, Ms. Marin. Mr. McDaniel.
I've been very busy over the last few weeks, crisscrossing the county, looking at, very early in the morn- I'm not a morning person, very early in the morning, 7:30, 7:45, watching the Open Gate machines, the, the weapons detectors at work. Westfield, Edison, Chantilly Woods, and a couple more, I can't remember off the top of my head. The most interesting thing I did was the Clearview Elementary School, back, kind of the back school night barbecue, where the kids got me to jump rope. I jumped rope, I made it nine jumps before I lost balance, an AirPod flew 10 feet out of my pocket, and later that night I had to take three to leave just to be able to go to bed. But the funniest thing that happened to me the last couple of weeks, I was picking my daughter up from the bus stop, and it's gotten to the point where she just gets off the bus and runs off with her friends, which is great, but she got about 100 feet ahead of me. And I said, Alice. She turns around and goes, and I, I look at her and I'm like, what have you done? And she turns around, looks at me and goes, and takes off running again. The kids are doing well. With that, goodnight.
Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Dr. Anderson.
Thank you. I think Mr. McElveen stole some of my thunder because I did want to talk about the Alumni Hall of Fame. It was great, especially as the Annandale Adams had three individuals who were being recognized, in addition to Jim Acosta, who had a wonderful, wonderful speech that was pointed and timely. Obviously, he is an analyst and speaker. We also had Amir Abu El Ahwa, who is the chief of staff for our own Board of Supervisor Chair, Jeff McKay. He was an Adam, as well as Dennis Scarborough, an Air Force veteran who currently serves as the Executive Director of Operational Readiness for the U.S. Transportation and Transportation Security Administration for TSA. So it was just really wonderful just to see the very best that, not the very best that Fairfax has to offer, but how they've come and are impacting the world. And there was a wonderful recipient who is the most accomplished violinist, she's a musician, and is just going around the country, just very impressive. It's a very nice event, so I do encourage you all to attend as well. Just very quickly, I do want to say thank you to all of the principals for their wonderful back-to-school nights and open houses. Families have been very appreciative of having the opportunity to engage with staff and with teachers, and it was very interesting at Poe, Ms. Barrow also did a video, in addition to the school board video, she did a video during the advisory lesson to introduce herself to the community. I thought that was a great way, since they don't do assemblies beforehand, for the principals to have an opportunity to, to be heard in terms of what they wanted to accomplish. Also visited in the last couple of weeks, Poe Middle School and Brenmore Middle School, as well as Edison High School. And I just want to really give some kudos to those principals for all their wonderful work. And at Poe, I want to highlight the fact that there is a new approach of all hands on deck when it comes to the advisory period. They are teamed up, and everyone is involved, principal, deans, everyone is there to connect with the students. They develop, they develop also their own community-building relationships, and they will be there the entire year. And I find it fantastic that the administrators have, have also carved out that time to build relationship with kids, and I know that they're going to see exponential benefit to that. I also want to say thank you to the principal of Brenmore Park, Principal Williams, for all of her work of, work of running a school during a renovation, which, I don't know if Mr. Gordon is there, is a week ahead of schedule, which is a better position to be than behind schedule. So that's also fantastic. And at Edison, it was really wonderful to hear from the principal and seeing how their focus on culture and community has really impacted their discipline work. So it, it does, when we focus on things and put the right strategies, we see the results. And I'm, I've seen that at these schools. Thank you, and goodnight.
Thank you, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Moon.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to note a couple of celebration holiday coming up, starting with Yom Kippur on October 2nd, to wish a meaningful holiday to Jewish students and families on October 2nd. But more importantly, Mr. McElveen knows about this, Harvest Moon Festival is coming up on October 6th. Harvest Moon, because that's the day when we have largest moon, based upon lunar calendar, it's August 15th, according to lunar calendar. It's our, just like our Thanksgiving. For Koreans, we call it chusok. For Chinese, they call it zhongqiuji. And for Japanese, sukimi. And tetrantho for Vietnamese. And they will be celebrating a, a, a day of harvesting everything they have worked so hard on that day. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Moon. Ms. Lady.
Yes, thank you. This upcoming week is Blue Star Week, which raises awareness and fosters support for military-connected families who often move to new communities, especially in the DMV. Fairfax County Public Schools is committed to ensuring our military families feel welcomed and a sense of belonging to their local community. I certainly appreciate your service and sacrifices. I have also been out in the, out and about in the community like my colleagues. I enjoyed being at Langley High School's Pyramid Gathering. It was interesting to see the marching band come in because it was middle schools and high school and lots of instruments. Unfortunately, they fell in that game to Westfield, but they will rise for another occasion. Also, in terms of boundary meetings, I enjoyed being there at South Lakes last night with my colleague, Ms. Marin. Also want folks to know that there is a boundary meeting on Saturday morning at Marshall High School. That's at 9:00 AM. I will be there virtually to hear folks and what their feedback is for that particular pyramid. Also, will be at Hayfield for Robotics on Saturday, and then the Herndon High School marching band competition that will be hosted. I will be there to see my marching hornets. And this Friday, I will also be as, with Mr. Frisch, the McLean Football Game. And then next week, I've got a couple of visits, Churchill Road, Longfellow and Lemon Road, I will be visiting next week, and I'm looking forward to that. And also, for those of you that live in the town of Herndon, the Herndon State of the Town, which is presented by our mayor, will take place Tuesday evening at 7:00 PM. So I will be there and would love to see some of you folks out there as well. And I think that's it. Thanks.
And with that, at 10:40 PM, we are adjourned.